Can't see part of it.
Would you hear something? You think that I do that?
But you know what?
Oh, and right.
No, mine is over here.
It's on today.
Hey, darling. Got these torches up on the glass in the backyard.
I'll tell my own friend.
They like this. Trying to shine and we don't be doing our eyes. I I I don't. If I start acting coughing.
Said he gave us all.
I've had two days since we did. I think today is the club that works. And your. People are running out of. Now, well, please. Boy, you leave your stew flag. And two political which tanks. Quantification, uh, they got in the festival with liberty. You. Yeah, well, since I've been here, we've got a two backup four times. Yeah. And down there, we had a pretty good mountain body, so. I'm saying we get fixed. Um, all right, and then, uh. Magnum. That's from six. Yeah, right. Five thousand, another bid was. Fourteen something. It'll actually. And then the highway is gonna supply the gravel and the asphalt.
We'll be charging him for the materials. Um, I think he's gonna pay for it.
I'll make the motion that we approve the bid from Cam Paganer and Sons. And son. For five thousand.
Second. On both sides.
Yes. I guess. Was putting some notes here for our discussion later for our, but we want to put that one under our five thousand.
If you would like to, I just need.
Your structure might be a, oh, no idea, starting a rocky, but.
That's all right, yeah. I'm ready to do it that way.
Yeah.
So I just need a motion from your side, then, if you agree to do that.
I'll make that motion. One second.
And do you call all on?
Oh, all in favor.
Hi.
In this area opposed.
Thank you.
Four thousand more conditions. Brother, how are you? Wonderful, yourself?
Sounds just great, thank you.
Thanks. Uh, my first item of business. I have our IDOC grant funded request from the state of Indiana. Our advisory boards have approved the grant funded dollars previously on March twelve. Now in alignment with IC total eleven dash twelve dash two dash three has been approved by the county commissioners. The total amount of spending, I think the budgets have already been presented. You should already have that information. Uh, that is my request. And if you have any questions, I can certainly answer the question.
Well, I don't have any questions on that one. You know, make a motion on through. Grant funds. I'll set the bath.
Thank you.
And then they're not signing yours, give you one, they didn't even. You wanna wait there for.
I can do whatever you'd like.
I'm on that thing.
I shall do my. Well, this is grown. What have I done? Thank you. Thank you all so much. I appreciate that greatly. Now proceed with my second item of business. Uh, the second item of business is a. And Mr. Lynch is here to assist with this as needed, but we attended a meeting about a month ago about coalition to start counting. And I was requesting, frankly, I had discussions. It's in regards to, am I saying it right, Frank, in the last box with a box, Narcan box? I don't care what his name is, everybody knows what it is. Free Narcan, uh, you know, so people could have access to it, as you all know, you, you, the community people, the overdose continue and start counting. And then we had the discussion a month ago at a meeting with some of treatment providers. It can be, it's our understanding Porter Stark can provide it and provide it at no cost to us. We would just need a place to put it up. And I had had discussion with Frank about that, and he thought NX two would be a good place. I think there's only one other place right now that provides it in Stark County, and that's Porter Stark Services. I talked to Vice President Jessica about it and garnered his support as well as Judge Hall about it as well. Because this is new territory. But the funds are there. We don't access it, we don't have to be involved, and it just gives the local people another avenue. Should they wanna get free Narcan, they can get it. So that is my request. Did I miss anything, Mr. Lynch?
Placement. I wanna put it in between first and second door going advantage to that way it's not in the lobby. It's not directly supervised scene, anything like that by probation or committee correction. So there's not gonna be the stigma of, no crap, they're watching me. But at the same time, they have access to it during hours operation, it's where we keep an eye on it. So basically just right above the heater in that, that's good. There's no electric in that line because there's actually a line that's built on the outside of the wall. So it's not like we gotta worry about hitting something on the inside. I imagine it's not gonna be more than a couple screw holes.
So this would be something somebody can get, go and get it so that way they need it for their friend or themselves later? Because obviously during an emergency, you're not gonna. Or you're gonna run there and get it.
What I find is a lot of times it's a matter of parents, they've got your kid coming home at the weekend, getting out of jail, something like that, and they wanna have.
And then somebody just restocks it.
It gets reached, it gets checked monthly, it gets checked.
This was.
Maybe more than that.
Something this, listen, effectively, effectively the same thing as the, uh. Um, vending machine that was discussed a few years ago.
Yeah, the smaller version.
How many doses go in it?
Eight.
Honestly, I don't know.
I think.
But they'll take care. They'll take care of that. They'll, they'll fund it. We just. We thought it would be a good idea, Frank, and I did, and that's why I said I spoke with, uh.
It's a funded program, not funded through state or anything like that. It's just overdose lifeline is a private organization, the nonprofit, what have you. It was basically just created. You get money, they had kids that were going to die, so they started a program. The provide free Narcan.
So this is smaller and so the, this ser- security concerns with the. Um, the vending machine we were talking about a few years ago are, are.
Minimal. Smaller version, what have you, but I mean, that's it. It's, you know, we don't have the electric, we don't have. Any of that kind of stuff. They're taking up any space. It's gonna be.
You think putting in between them doors, Frank, because like telling them, I'm trying to bust you. Approach that.
I don't think anybody needs to talk in that kind of bed. Somebody's stupid mad, they're, it's because they're mad about their Narcan bottle. So there's cameras all over the outside of the building. Well, it's an idea of people won't be directly seen.
Right.
You know, going in, getting it, they need it.
It would be.
We have a size that's available.
Twenty-four seven.
It's not twenty-four seven. It's a billion explosive board.
Okay.
So. And that's, that's the issue is where does, where can we put it up? Where it would be twenty-four hour access and not, I mean, like I said, I'm not worried about somebody leaving there and picking Narcan out of it. I'm worried about somebody vandalizing. Because they come back the idea of Narcan, so. That's gonna be the thing.
That's true. It won't hurt it being above the, who we're talking about. I don't know anything about my.
Well, that's why I wanna put it inside the building.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, because that's, that's my.
It's an insulated box and everything like that, and our hands temperature sensitive. So as far as.
Being above the heater, that's why I was curious.
That one not so much because it's insulated box. I'm not too worried about it. We can offset it, you know what I mean?
I'm just asking.
Yeah, and that, that means that's, it tends to keep that room like seventy degrees once, when it kicks on and kicks off, so. It's not like it's cooking it up to ninety or something.
April, did you have something? I just wondered if it's like the box that's on the side of Porter Star.
Yeah.
Same thing.
One inside, yeah.
So, like, I understand that, you know, the, the Narcan can save a life. But what happens if we put this Narcan box in? And people continue to overdose? Um, what's the next step after that? Because the way I see it is it's basically making it easier for, for people to use and. My, my opinion, the next step after that would be providing the public with a safe, uh, safe place to go and use. You know, like others, we've seen other places do.
Um, I'm not offering up safe orange sites. I'm not offering up seminars, exchange programs, anything like that. The people that wanna overdose on anything narcotic wise, they're doing it intentionally. Narcotics are overdubbed, people are overdubbed on it. It's accidental. They're just, whether it's stupidity, whether, whatever it is, it's just, they're trying to get that high all over again that they got the first time, and they never will. And they end up overdosing. It's accidental. So once you're providing marketing, you're saving those lives. The ones that wanna have a party and go steal all the Narcan out of the box and then whoop it up on a weekend or something like that, and somebody ends up kicking it, which we've seen instances of that. However, we've also seen instances where somebody accidentally gets Narcan or accidentally gets overdose, and the Narcan is what saves. So I don't care about the rest of it. It's we, what we can do with what we can do. I can't save every dog in the world, but. I'll take care of this one. It's on side road by itself, you know what I mean? And that's the mentality that we gotta have. I, like I said, I'm not trying to offer up. Here, I'm not handing out heroin now because we got Narcan. That's just dumb.
I, I, I think too, and if I could just spin off to what Mr. Lynch was saying on your question, sir. It's really being viewed more as a harm reduction intervention. Quite frankly, and, and when I did a little research, first one, we heard about this, and there was a stag, the stalemate, there wasn't a lot of movement on it. Asked, for whatever reason, you look at Porter County, they have multiple sites, you look at La Porte, multiple sites, but. We do have people in Stark County, and I'm responsible for community supervision. I'm the first one found and violations and detained people for violations of the drug use. But we have people that are dying. And can we just take a more preventative harm reduction effort to maybe save somebody was the only reason behind it, quite frankly. Great, great question, though.
And, and then, um, a- and the research that you've done. Has there any been, ever been any cases to where the, the funding basically ended up falling back onto the taxpayers?
No, sir. No, sir. All this is, uh, we were instructed, order start provides all. Overdose lifeline, some of this been in effect for over ten years. If it's gonna go anywhere. But I have no control over it, but then it's not gonna be a matter of, well, then we've gotten that cost, and now we're gonna start charging board or not accounting money or something. Or not. And even if it did, at this point, I mean, that's how much money's been provided for public health. That's part of it as far as harm reduction. So be it through drug use, which is a problem in every county, every state throughout the nation at this point in time. I don't care who says they're gonna do whatever about Chinese venom, but still, we still gotta deal with it here.
Probably money is the thing that. Uh, whether it's health first, one way or another.
Either way, yes, there's, there's money available. They're gonna address it. And we don't have to use any of our tax dollars to help.
I can always get this one seven. I'd be interested in sustaining that. That's important, thanks, sir.
I'll make the motion that we approve the. Right, cabinet. For annex two.
Second. Bye. Bye. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um. Wow. Hey, um, we joined in on this.
Actually, I have something written here too to bring up. We got our part.
Okay, Steve, all right. Um, I'm having a little tear for the Gneri. Uh, I remember the committees and the council on the twentieth, uh, February. I attended the required, uh. Workshops for stellar on the business, fourth and the fifth. Uh, we have a follow-up meeting, um, the sixth. And copies of those presentations, I think, were sent to everybody's. Like that to the left night or something. That's well, the, this presentation, but, um. So today, with the rest of Mr. Piranha. Um. He wanted me to offer some examples by the. The, of the types of projects that are funded by seller in the past from, um. Various other pools of money, um, so. Let's run through that quick. That's, uh, the first page of that handout is just, uh. Jackie kind of wrote the timelines. So, um, so. Pathways. Um, so the office committee, real affairs, they're all grand, the CDG funds. With, uh, of the eight million, they put four million that's set aside for the stellar pathways. That's an A plan to manage. So examples of some of those projects could be stormwater infrastructure improvements, water infrastructure, wastewater. Even plant infrastructure, um, public facilities like fire stations. Like facilities go, it doesn't, it's not political purpose facilities like. Government. Like government built. Um, like clearance, for example, demolition and repurposing of spaces. Main street revitalization, broadness, red, broad fan readiness programs, fire plans, and, uh, eighty-eight, eighty-four snap. Um. Just quickly for the CDG fund, just to remind everybody, politically, you gotta be low to moderate income areas. You can't have new utility, you know, new residential or industrial development. Um, their primary objective is to serve low to mild income. Cities and preventing or eliminating life. And that's the biggest pool of money. Uh, yeah, I CDA. Um, out of their three million. Funds that they grant, uh, one and a half million was allocated for the seller pathways. That's a fifty fifty match. Um. That's typically your owner occupied housing improvements, um. Housing developments, both new and restored downtown areas. Uh, workforce and senior citizen, senior citizen housing projects, things like that. Um, what you have to remember with I H C D, the first time we did stellar, we had a developer on board that. Uh, was familiar and a, and a finance person that was familiar with I H C D. Protocol there, so you almost need somebody like that involved in a project like that. And that's to, to. Right now, um, right now, I think Bo and Johnson has. The same developer that was gonna do it if we won seller last time, they're actually putting together for an I H C D grant to be housing development and Johnson. Now without a reference, so just for example. Um. Next one is, uh, Indiana State Farm and Agriculture, I H C B A. Um, they put aside two hundred thousand dollars for, uh, food agricultural programs to address community security and access to local foods. So that's the types of projects and security programs, access to food. Um. Then there's the IDDC, which is. Basically. That's the in Indiana. Promoting thing, so they got fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. So, uh, an example of that is Fort Wayne did something with. Um, like interns that came into their town. They basically set up where they, you know, would evaluate, they would meet regularly. Evaluate the pros and cons of living in the town, and then they, they took that information and developed the program to, to attract young workers to Fort Wayne. Based on the responses of interns that were already coming there. Um, that's just an example of how they use that funding. Um, typically it's used for like video production. And. To. Promote your. Promote, promote your town, inner region. Um. And, uh, and it's similar within that, um, those. Funds, just gotta remember, are for construction only. Um, there's no land acquisition and right away plan development in those funds that they, uh, set aside for stellar. So that for construction, it's like roads, bridges, sidewalks, trails, uh, new gates and railroad crossing. Uh. Stuff there, utility infrastructure and. Along highway cordy. They're gonna, you know, the fun like all, they have to be involved with the highway, so. Um. Then. Indiana State Farm and Health. Indiana State Office of Rural Health, um. They set aside seventy-five thousand dollars. Now that's for not, uh. Project specific, that's. Programs. Okay. Um, so. Like one good example is that, uh, Community Health Worker Program. Where they were seeing that. You know, there was a need to provide transportation for patients for medical appointments or groceries or prescriptions. So they put a successful project was they put a project together, a program together. To provide. For those services in their, in their region. Um, another one did a pre-mobility clinic where they saw that. The, you know, the biggest thing was seventy-five percent of the missed office visits were due that people couldn't get to. Uh, these problematic losses, so it, it, things like that, so they. They basically call a van. Get it bad, Mike. Um, there's also food as medicine programs. You know, garden programs you can do, farmer's market programs. And community meal service programs. That's not a big pool of money. And community meal service programs. That's not a big pool of money. Uh, mostly the ones other than D B G funds and and uh, are not the big pools of money and so. Um, the last one is uh, the IDNR. Um, they're typically using the land and water conservation funds and the uh, store preservation funds. Um, they fund things like trails, fishing piers, kayak launches. Um, and just one side now, the side from stellar. From the workshops, which I mentioned last time. The Stark County Courthouse Square, not courthouse itself. Already qualifies for being eligible for a project through IDNR. So if someone wants to work more into that, well. But they already qualify for a grant of immunity. I think it was like three counties that qualified, so.
Maybe get it rebricked.
We're not scratching scratching up our bumbers when we park at the curb.
Finally on my list there, uh, just you have to remember that um there's no guarantee though, you know, if a product's in your strategic investment, finally, so guarantee it's gonna be funded, you know, but it's still subject to the requirements that each government of all the nation. So you just kind of have to, you know, there's some, some of them require environmental reviews. Some of them follow data, bacon, wage, research changes.
You have any idea what the amount is for that courthouse square improvement project? Okay, who who's usually um, going after that? Is that a commissioner thing and and other counties or a council thing? They're both.
Yeah, is this a matching? We have to make.
I would guess most of them are matching.
Yeah, you're still, you're still applying for a whatever funds are available, but you're uh, you're not competing because uh, Stark County's square is already eligible.
But but we have to match funds in a situation. And so my my question is, what would that percentage be? That that would be what would be relevant to
If you don't mind me, uh, just adding real quick, um. Attended the meetings also, but I also mentioned in the last um, council meeting. I think especially for the council, since there's more of us, it gives us an opportunity. Uh, I suggested that we speak more with our township trustees. Um, about stellar. And then also, and I brought that up in the stellar meetings, that I think the trustees should be involved and I've spoken to the ones of my constituency and they're very receptive to that. And I think in the future, it's also an opportunity for us to start understanding what their constituents are saying about what we should do with solar money. So it's it's also another benefit. So um, I played phone tank with Oregon. Um, Washington canceled their meeting. Um, I haven't uh, in in the north end, haven't spoken to them, but I did meet with the California Township Board. About a week and a half ago and it was kind of interesting and you know, they had some ideas and you know, one of the things that um, one of them was was very adamant about, said that they've heard from their constituents that a lot of people are talking about continuing to develop our trail. Through the county, that it would be great to be able to connect Judson and and Bass Lake with Knox. But then going through all the townships and just how and and we've spoken about that. So I think, you know, as far as stellar is concerned. You know, it's an exciting thing that 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 could be a big part of it. And since since you gave me this stage, I'll just mention another thing too. The other thing that I learned in the meeting. That um, we will get um, a fifty thousand dollar return um, in stellar. The the grand scheme of the things um, for a consultant, it's gonna be more than fifty. We need about seven thousand to write the letter. This is right why I wrote fifty seven up here under the ARPA, um, uh, heading. Was that personally one of seven, one of ten in this case? I think that stellar, it it's a one way, the money that we're gonna get from it. Um, and to get started, and that's why I was talking about for a second. It's probably gonna be more like eighty thousand total for the for the um, consultant, but to get started, basically they need fifty seven thousand dollars in in that neighborhood. So that's why I wrote fifty seven up there.
Did I understand that meeting day, but uh Justin's gonna participate with the money and whoever gets involved
Yes.
will take part in it.
Yes, right. So that kind of leaves the door open, you know, for some help.
Yeah, we we are gonna know a little bit about the background and as as far as submit, you know, get it, get into this first stage. The first stage was you had to attend this workshop. And we've met that. So then the second stage is you have to submit this letter of intent to be considered for stellar. That's kind of where we're at now. Um, if you will get approved of that, if you submit the letter and 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 you get picked, that's when the other money comes into involved and that's when you have develop your development plan, say what projects you want to include it in your ultimate submission.
So you're asking today that we'll do fifty thousand.
I mean, you can set that aside, but that only comes into play if the letter of intent.
We need to know that.
Well, it depends on, you know, going forward. At the last meeting, we discussed that, you know, to get your letter in tent, you know, we've gone through a month here of meetings. Still the deadline's many first, so you you still have to get a group of people together that is going to either put the NOI together. Or you need the help of a consultant to help you put that NOI together. Which that's what seven thousand probably comes in is probably I mean, I don't know exactly what that was, depending on what consultant you get. But uh, I mean, you're still in a core group of people that can facilitate that. So once the NOI is submitted, then you gotta wait till you're designated. So once you're designated, then you have to go to, then we have to almost immediately reach out to all these groups we kind of identified in the in the workshop. Just to basically get a pool of people to start putting this plan together along with a consultant. At the end of the day, the consultant is not presenting this in in Indianapolis. It's it's the group of people that from this region are gonna present it.
We've got a group started. Is that group gonna keep going and we need a new?
What you're gonna need, yeah, you're gonna need, you're gonna need from all facets of the county involved in that group and then from that group, you're gonna need a core group. I think the core, the group that we have now is will facilitate getting that process going. But as far as
So you you would describe the group we have now as the core group? And they would lead the effort to expand it into the community representative group to to specify things.
Right.
If we get designated?
Soon as you we get, well. You could probably get through with the people we got now to get through the um, the notice of intent with with a with a consultant. I can tell you. I can't hardly spend any more time. I would love to and I I will be there to help. It's gonna be going forward. There's no question about that. But for me to be involved as the core person or consultant and all that is, it's just not gonna happen. Um, but there's many of us that will lead that to make sure that happens. And if we're designated, you almost immediately have to have a uh, a community engagement. Whether that, you know, from all these different entities in the counties, we can form a group of people that are wanna see it through. It takes a lot of work. It's not.
So your group get to consult or us in the council get it out of you?
We'll we'll set up a, you know, invite how we did last time, set up an invite. All those, we set up a meeting.
Okay.
Marty Lucas wrote the last red up letter, right, for the last I mean, I I don't think he can do that for free, but I I hope that he is one of the bidders for uh to consult for that, to write the letter.
I don't think Marty will be involved. Cause he hasn't been so far as far as uh
Just nice if somebody that knows the county does, you know.
Yeah, yeah, usually usually if you have somebody like that that's familiar with a lot of entities within the, within the county, that's the person you need.
Right.
Um, uh, last, we had Larry Wicker. At that time, he was familiar with a lot of the entities in the county. Obviously Jackie Ryan is, but I don't think Jackie's gonna lead on the group. She certainly will assist. Anyway, she can, every mission she can, uh, she's helped me quite a bit through this process, um. And she was integral in the first stellar. So her and I, I think, and Andrew from uh Paul Johnson were the only ones left from south of the mission stellar. We're, we'll, you know, obviously Andrew has a a interest in it because his community must be about it, so. Uh, as I read this, the city needs to be led by us as the county or you need to find an organization like Community Foundation to to head this up. What I'm hearing is um you know, you're going to be involved, but you don't have the bandwidth to to lead the charge. Um, was really hopeful, hopeful that the Community Foundation would maybe step up um, into this particular role. Um, I think I think last time they it aligned with their funding at the time. But their Their structures changed how Jackie can actually be in that. Or she was just an assistant to Jessica. I think Jessica helped Marty put together the original NOI. And I'm sure Jackie will help do that as well. But I I think her, I I don't think her uh the peers, I'm thinking she can be an interacting valve or the community foundation.
We gotta have somebody that's gonna stay on top of this. To make sure it's executed well. We don't I don't wanna repeat of I mean, I understand I've gotten screwed up by inflationary um factors. But I wanna wind up with more than just a patch of gravel somewhere in the county. We definitely, I think we definitely need to move forward on this. We just right, individuals to to lead it. Um, to identify the right consultant to use that will be most cost effective.
I did reach out to six consultants. And after that, I did three. Um, communicated and process.
Heard back with interest or that they weren't interested? Was that three positive?
So that what you named today and okay, you need forward.
Why? I I think I
Yeah, we need, not only do we need to move forward, but we need to pick someone to lead the charge.
You need to decide whether you want to move forward or not. That's number one and I would say uh, maybe commit some funds to
I think we've gotten past that. It's safe to say we're we're ready to commit funds.
I I think it makes sense now. It it shows our, it it even, it it bolsters our interest in in the effort. I mean, one of the things that Jackie brought up uh, during the meeting that we we attended. Um, was that and and just to remind the public, we were an extremely strong runner up in the last competition. I mean, I feel like they're being honest when they say we were this close to being picked. I, you know, I think there were just a couple of things that pushed Marsha County over the top. And Bob and others can correct me if I'm wrong. I think I also heard that had COVID not turned out the way it did, we probably would have been funded in the next cycle. Um, with the similar amount that was, you know, being, um, you know, vied for in the in the beginning.
So I think another thing that you need to keep in mind too is is that if you submit that this lot of intent and you get designated, you're getting all the reimbursement funds for for the for the development plan and that actually updates whatever the current one is and gives you one that's.
I mean, it's a risk of the fifty thousand, but if we go through, if we get through, then we get fifty thousand back.
Plus, at the end of the day, you you get another strategic investment plan of updated products in your community. We haven't used any other ones to mistake. And that would have nothing to do with other than stellar development funds that we report to second place. The stellar and and having it in place, running, executing stellar. My thinking is that at the end of the day maybe the fifty thousand dollars and a little bit, if that's on your part. You're gonna have a strategic investment plan for the county or maybe what you get.
We definitely use it at the park board to be able to submit the IDNR grant. The old stellar, I mean, that's
The fact that we've been executing on that plan today, even without and we've shown that we can move forward.
Are you guys ready to provide?
I'll make a motion that we provide fifty seven thousand dollars to stellar from the ARPA uh, loss revenue line.
I'll second this.
Including the uh, commitment of the fundings just passed by council.
I'll second that.
Rachel, just one second. Can I go back to my motion to make sure I'm just hearing some discussion? Can I take a roll call on uh, council for that vote? Um, I'm an I.
I'm gonna abstain. I'm an I.
I'm I.
Six I's and one extensions.
Alright, I'm following up again this meeting, but uh the request to employ Spyglass to go over our uh, telecommunications bills. I did resend those to Justin. I don't know if you guys have a chance to review them and uh maybe you know what the verdict is.
What's the purpose of it? I guess, what, can we explain that again?
It's called whatever is unnecessary on the bills. Reduce the amount that we have to pay for things that we're not using or needing. The cost is
It's a performance.
Yeah, cost structure. There there's no upfront cost for us.
So basically whatever, whatever they save us, it's it's a percentage of what they save us. It was a really, really straightforward agreement. There was no term specified, so it's a hat will term. Um, at least that's my, I think they didn't specify. The line items are a bit uh, under a fee structure, which is section two, fifty percent of any cost recovery is defined. And then for any service elimination savings or cost reduction savings, it's a multiple of what they save you. So again, there's no set fee unless they save you.
The duration of that is
There is no duration specified.
Any money they save us from the past, they get fifty percent of, we get the other fifty percent. Any money saved going forward, they get the next twelve months difference of savings. And after that, we're business as usual, uh, that reduced.
I mean, it is a the fee structure is looks like a little advice, but from what I've seen, uh, then all I can stand and speak to this from the uh, the data they provided us, we'll see with other channels. I think they said anywhere from fifty to thirty percent savings. Be nice if it were higher. Assess the way the structure is set up.
Yeah, we've wanted, we said that we're not scheduling. I'm just if something similar to this was done in twenty eighteen, if I remember correctly. I'm just wondering how how we've gotten to the point where we suspect we might be at the point where we need this again.
I I wasn't here for that.
Right.
So I have no no recollection or or documentation of it. Uh, regardless of what was uh fifteen to thirty percent of what we save now is still.
Right, did we we have anything that we can pull up um, regarding how much savings they found us in that round?
I mean, we paid like right at the bills.
Right, yeah, I just, yeah, there should have been some sort of invoices, because the billings is
I think it was that much. It wasn't that much savings, was it? It was just a very little bit.
And I was specifically referring with Granite. Spyglass does have extensive history in auditing Granite's bills to go over them from, you know, a third party perspective.
Do we still have, are we still wanting? We still have, are we still wanting, so we're still working with Granite?
Yes. That's.
They got, it was like a performance base too when we first started.
Okay, well, it ain't costs, it's nothing. There's no annual fee or nothing.
Right, it's all performance based.
When we decide we don't want. To use them anymore, we're only an obligated for uh years where the. Payments based on a percentage what they so had were saving us when we say, okay, we're done.
There is no term specified, but you want to keep it for at least a year, because if they have a a monthly, you know, and it's a best deal twelve, you're only gonna get your money's worth if. You complete at least a year.
Right, yes.
Yeah, but otherwise it is a that will, that will term.
In the end, the only real cost would be the cost of. If we were to do this auditing ourselves and skip the middle in, which uh is more than I have.
Work hours available.
The Mark's question though, is there anything in the like in the contract, Justin, as far as like a compete clause or anything? If we hire it, it sounds like there's a, this is a little bit of duplication or redundancy by having a. No second company involved.
There are, there are four sections, um one that talks about the scope of the services, one that talks about the fees. Invoices and payments and when they're doing a mental miscellaneous section, basically it's touched out. Then you with if the. You know, there's a disagreement or punitive damage is not being assessed and um things of that nature.
Should we assess whether Granite has anything in their contract that precludes us from moving forward with a secondary? Provider.
Yeah, I I guess I didn't realize that we already have one in place, you know, do kind of the same duties, but I I probably would be worth checking into.
Just to make sure.
Well, there's probably enough difference between the two, I'm I'm going to guess since. Since they're actually billing us for services now. Um they're they're a layer of distraction between us and the actual providers like Verizon.
Right, only one you're using.
I believe we have ten or so lines through Granite right now that we're paying for.
Yeah, so.
May maybe Spyglass will smoke out Granite, that's.
But yeah, I think I I was, um this is the dangerous part, I would assume, I'm just gonna say that uh because. Getting billed for services from Granite, that would that would not preclude us from getting the spy going as to. Over oversee what we're getting billed for from Granite as well as, you know, providers.
I'd have to see the contract, but one would have, I won't say assume, but yeah.
Like the motion to move forward with this proposal from Spyglass pending review of the Granite contract. Well, second that.
Do we have anybody that has that contract from Granite?
I should have it.
I mean, I think it's not as nice as I've seen it.
Operations, I know we're operating four out of six. The fourth would be in the transfer. On a twelve hour to twenty four hour basis. Depends on what the call volume is at average at eight o'clock at night. As always, minimum of one ALS member at notch base and one train. The chase card. Uh seventy three percent of the time, we have two or more staff, at one point in time, we had pulled one staff. Banning the transfers and chase of ALS providers. Uh thirty six transfers last month. We didn't turn any down, but tracked down and did come in and take two. Because we were. At four calls deep at one point in time, so a nine one one still takes precedence over. Uh right now, we have no full time openings for EMTs. We do have four applications on a waiting list, which is nice to have. Uh we have two new part time drivers that are doing the transfer. Uh we did get a new applicant uh for current full time paramedics as well as four, four full time openings. And the two drivers, we'll say, training, we did have a traumatic brain injury training along the blood flow pathogens. We have an EVOC class set on. Which is much needed for next month, beginning of next month, along with SIDS and.
What are we gonna do?
We're gonna do that fast like fire, unless we can get it into the school, I prefer to get it into the school because it's a much bigger parking lot yet. But that's just a lot more. Ambulance maintenance. Pretty much everything is up to current. We have two reserves right now, one of the reserves is that sideline getting the rear step replaced, as it rusted out. And still have to get over the highway. With that. The base maintenance. Outside outlets were installed, still waiting on Rick to come finish the door entry systems. There are two grants that wrote uh a couple of days ago for training and equipment for up to five thousand dollars to assist them in new protocol protocols. No response as of yet on the four grant requests to purchase new power load stairs. Always the grants, I look every day. Uh no donations and PP is in good shape. That covers the important. Uh I actually have some other things that weren't on the agenda, like a gold rose as well, but I'll get to those after. The amendment to the handbook. The handbook does not match our current practice at this point. Everybody should have a copy of the amendment. Uh we've always paid forty hours on a weekly basis, forty hours and eight hours of overtime. The way the. As that is according to them, it's fifty three hours, but never paid that. Uh my predecessor, one of my predecessors had changed to fifty three hours for FLSA.
But never implemented the practice?
But never implemented the practice, so we've been going. For exact. So. Right now, I would like to get, make the amendment, as everybody says, as right now. I don't know how they, how they got half of this stuff in it, says uh skip down to. Off all time, non exempt emergency medical services employees are required to provide services to public twenty four hours a day. Seven days a week and light these special responsibilities the department has provided. Continuous uninterrupted service, special policies apply. To the methods in which overtime is provided. All full time, non exempt emergency medical services employees who are engaged in emergency medical operations, that is what I want to put in. And I want to take out law enforcement activities. Will be compensated in importance to section seven K partial overtime pay exemption of fair labor standards act in conjunction with use of. Determining uh section seven K, the county further adopts the use of a seven day work period for the purpose of determining compensation. For overtime hours worked, based upon foregoing the annual salary, full time, non exempt employees in the emergency medical service department. Set forth in the county's annual salary ordinance constitutes straight time compensation for all regularly scheduled hours of employment during work period. All full time, non exempt, emergency medical services employees will be paid straight time compensation. For what I want to change is eight forty hours. And strike the fifty three hour regular employment during each work period. Overtime pay or compensatory time will be approved for all work in excess of. Once again, strike the fifty three and add it back to the forty the way we've always done during a work period. Overtime earned during a work period will be paid the first regularly scheduled paycheck issued. Subsequently to the work period in which the active compensation was earned.
Can you remember if this change was made before or after we had consultants review the handbook?
So this change was um made during the new handbook. Process, um but if it's just never followed.
If you don't mind, if I could ask Rachel, I also met with EMS folks about this, is this the same thing I talked to you about Rachel and and we had enough budget dollars to change that also because. Just so the council knows, um obviously commissioners too, I don't, I don't, you know, I wasn't paying attention here because this is brought up before, but. What ended up happening was is the EMS personnel are falling short basically on on their pay by the wording of the new um. Uh protocol, I guess we want to say um for overtime pay, basically all they're doing is they're just asking to go back to the way it was before. And um. I I think that's a fair request from them, because basically what's what ends up happening is they're losing quite a bit of money. Um that they got before, it's just that because of their structure of their pay, but.
The only thing that this won't change is when we talk about the vacation time.
Yes.
So his employees that take two vacation days. They're not getting forty hours, forty eight hours of forty hours straight time, eight hours overtime, they're getting forty eight hours of straight time. Because we can't get out.
I think that, I think EMS was willing to accept that though, right? And you know, like I said, just numbers wise, I just, I I had a couple EMS people that asked to meet with me. Talk to Jim about it also, but didn't mention it because I'm trying to stay in my own lane, but since we're here together and talking about it. I did reach out to Rachel, this in theory, like if we did go back to that, I just wanted to make sure budget wise, but give me in trouble.
But may I consult my HR coordinator, is there a view of anything that you want to add to any of this? Do you have anything you need to add into this, you know, this will satisfy you as well?
Which which actually, when you and I met about it, you, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to not include you, Sarah, but yes, Sarah did. Verify that, sorry.
But we do this, we do, we don't have to redo the whole book, right, we do like that, okay, we got.
Yes, yeah, we're. Yeah, I'll never make this change, I love the HR focus group, make this change in our handbook, but then I know we have other jingles, I mean.
Okay, to these. I'm sure everybody is aware that Chase car got wrecked. And it was now token. Which we knew. But purchased another one, which is now back in service eight days later. Jack's company has agreed to pay all the third costs for that replacement, including the new life. Uh which brings me to the next section. I want to take the all the vehicles and put front and rear. Facing cameras in the vehicles, I have the video footage briefly from the annex. Shows exactly how fast she is going when she will break. Along with whether it was hard. And I think that we need to continue this practice, just for the safety of. The employee for liability towards the county, everything else. I do, uh the initial cost. One time cost is ninety five hundred twenty two dollars. And the monthly cost is four hundred fifteen dollars thirty four cents.
That's for how many vehicles?
That's for all six, the reserves. Could have them, but they're not managed because they have over two hundred and thirty thousand miles.
So because of their mileage, they're not included in the monthly fees, even when we put they putting on it?
No, they won't, well, they will be included in monthly fees, but do we want to put cameras on those?
I want to, I put these cameras on every single. Vehicle in the fleet.
Also the highway.
EMS highway. Absolutely. Every every single county owned vehicle should have front and rear facing cameras.
Is it possibly cheaper to? We we had to work, like, put it all together.
Okay.
We're skipping ahead a bit.
Well, it needs to be innovated.
Okay, so why don't I? Why don't I get a hold of fleet complete and see how much it would be for all you, so you you're talking about all of our assets. You guys already have.
Yeah.
Cameras and mirrors, right? Only front faces.
And that's just completely separate.
Yeah. So everybody, so do you want me to get a quote for everyone except Sheriff?
Well, Sheriff, would you need rear facing, do you think, I mean?
I mean, it would be a benefit, but I don't know if it's necessary.
Is that the same company that Sheriff uses, like is is it one, is that's the other question? The highway EMS would be the same company.
Yes, yeah, can you still approve my vote today then?
Well, I was just gonna suggest going back to the, because that's infrastructure, it's things that we own.
See on on.
I think we should do highway and EMS.
On my quote, they're not charging me for any of the devices at all, it's just the monthly subscription fee.
Yeah, so that's what's weird about EMS one.
Why they're charging him for the device? Yeah, can you still approve my? I mean, is that what you're asking?
Eventually, I'd like to get. And for now, for now, I think, I mean, it's the way we're going about it. Maybe the most effective way to do it, you know, we pays in.
On my own project, if I already added.
But you paint it, you pay it.
Mine is only the.
Could we just combine it and put it under our puppy test, um infrastructure of.
How much is yours?
I would say put together, because here's what I'm thinking is if if Rachel can sweet talk them, because obviously Jim didn't sweet talk them.
Not this time.
Sweet talk them into not paying that hardware fee, we could apply that to additional vehicles of the commissioners, you know, like that way we get up too, but then you could spend it on more vehicles. That way we don't have to come back and say, oh, we left our money on the table.
Yeah. Okay.
So it's.
Mine is a monthly subscription fee, so mine, I am asking. So I'm asking for like a certain amount each month for at least the next few years, so I can build it in the budget then in twenty twenty six.
Well, can we?
So I I'm wanting. I'm asking for seventeen in the next few years.
The initial cost was under ten. And then the monthly was four fifteen, so.
With the with the numbers we're talking, would you guys be satisfying uh satisfied obligating thirty thousand dollars of arco funds for? Dash cams.
Um actually, um Councilman Black has brought something else, another company that he knows, Sam Sarah. Has a better rating and a little bit, people feel like it's more of a budget, would would you also be interested maybe in looking into their company or no?
No offense, but not really, because this is through our fleet, fleet through the first responder program. Yeah, it's something we already have, like we all. Thank you for offering, but like all of our phones for EMS sheriff um. It's through that first responder, even highway phones are through the first responder. So this connects with that.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we appropriate.
Is there gonna be any um updates included, like system updates with with this?
They've, they've updated our trials three times.
Yeah, and then updates don't cost anything, yeah, the software updates. All right, thank you.
They actually add a little more, we're gonna check on Sheriff, we're keeping it separate for now, he needs rear. Can we put a little more that we're gonna put aside or?
Well, I mean.
It's a different company.
Yeah, it's a problem, it's a different company, but. Yeah, it's a problem is a different time, but.
If we're authorizing a a total pool, we can. Between vendors as needed, right?
I'll revise the motion that I was gonna make. I'll make a motion that we appropriated forty thousand dollars from ARPA. Um infrastructure for camera development within the county.
If your group cannot do it, then we'll do one.
Is there a second? You have a second? Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, I? Is there any opposed? All in favor, Rachel?
In county vehicles. Uh to cover expenses over the course of next. I was gonna say, how how deep are you in the looking that looking into your options?
Uh what I do need is a security camera to go into the New York cottage room because as of twenty twenty-five, we actually had the house. I don't know. So I need a video surveillance on that to get us out of that.
After you're done with us, you need to talk to that gentleman sitting next to Stanley. As he's part of the company that uh put in the system.
Gotcha. So the quote is for thirteen thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Final price will be lower. There's an equipment on that, the line item for the uh POE inject.
Pretty giving today.
At the last uh park board meeting, the park board approved. Bowery faces at at the beach, next over to all the campgrounds, the bathrooms, the crust, the crusty. The only thing we're really here for today is to kind of talk us out. How this gets funded because it is. It is infrastructure owned by the county and we're just asking that. This amount be funded out of. County funds in that out of our. What's um? And we did it. We did get two bids. Um they were only about. So they are competitive. They are companies that have worked on. The pump system there at the beach a number of times. We've done a lot of we did a lot of repairs last year. Uh to keep this up and going, people spend a lot of time going out there and changing things over. My understanding is is the biggest cost of this is the control box. So, but they were competitive. They were very close together, so we believe that they were. The park board approved the lowest bid, so it's gonna happen. We just gotta work out the funding of it.
But if you're on new new pump and all that.
Yep.
And then we're gonna do the wiring.
Yeah, that's gonna be considered everything about the control box.
It's not just, you know.
The bit for this work was eleven thousand four ninety and that's what we're.
What's your operating budget?
I think we're at, what's the, you mean the full budget for them?
Capital, what's left in their capital amount?
Their overall budget is like two hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Right, so they have something specific for. There's almost all of it's left because we haven't opened yet.
That's twelve thousand. We gotta get more than six thousand. I've used three quarters of my equipment and we haven't even opened yet.
What would be the difference between municipal, like yourself? And out on my farm, I just had the same same work done with a five-inch well. For less than seven thousand dollars with the well. Well, you're you're saying that. I I yeah, I understand what you're asking. I don't know that it's apples and apples that we're talking about here. I mean, but. I don't know what your system is. I alls I know is is what the park system is and both of these companies have have worked on these systems. We went out and got beds from each own individually and they were within nine nine hundred dollars, so I.
When we put that lift station.
Flow master on it. Right, but 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 is that only the old one putting in?
That's just putting everything in.
It's a deep well.
Yeah, but is that the control box, all of that? I mean, is this?
Everything, right.
It's a five and a and a new five-inch well. I just sounded high. That's I. I don't know. All I know is we went out independently.
When you get to that variable phase.
About twenty-five hundred dollars for the pump, twenty-five three thousand.
Well, I don't know what comparing apples and oranges here, but.
You you didn't get a bid from Fletcher, which who did?
I was told to get two bids, so.
And that's why you're getting it from their top notch.
But we can't, we can't keep putting the band-aids on it. We have to replace it.
I mean. You know, just in fairness, when we created the Fairborn Budget, that's why we put. Sorry, the park board budget, that's why we had a seventy-one thousand dollar line was to repair things. You know, that's the purpose of the budget that's there. I mean, I'm just playing devil's advocate here because I'm always I'm always heavily in support of the park or the park board. But the thing is, is you know, when you just bought a new car, we just improved five hundred seventy-five thousand. Um I mean, this isn't a lot of money to ask for anyways. I mean, I I'm prepared also to recommend that we take this from ARPA also. Um because it is something that we needed. I mean, there were some questions because the water has enough pressure, but the. Stability of it, I mean, it's. I I guess changing the whole thing. I guess it makes sense. I don't know. Well, I guess since since you're both here, like what what are you, what are you predicting?
And I've been to us last year with that um. Whole lift station and all of that, the grant money for about fifty-nine thousand dollars. I was, it was suggested that I did that and I did. So it got tabled a couple of times. I had to switch money all over in our budget towards the middle end of the year. And by the time it all got taken care of. It was this first or second week of December. All of that money went back into my buckets. It was a new year and it was gone. So we did take that money out and use it, but towards the end of the year, I was cleaning bathrooms. I did all of the fall work myself along with one volunteer because I had no money to pay volunteer workers. Because we had spent that fifty-nine thousand dollars. Out of our budget.
So let's do this. Pay for this out of your budget. And if you're running out, come back.
That happened last.
Okay, if we do that, can we? How we understand this carryover budget that doesn't have a a number. Can we move eleven thousand five hundred from that carryover?
No, the carry the carryover slash balance that you're thinking of has nothing to do with appropriation.
I think what he's asking is where, when we got reimbursed that money in December, where did it go? Fifty-nine thousand for the lift station.
So I.
I think that's what he's asking.
I took that claim out of forty-nine twenty-seven, which is park board, and I put it into, I think it was seated that they approved or whatever. Which that auto, as soon as I removed it from that fund, your cash balance went up.
Separate cash balance from budget. The the and and it's and it's a bit of an abstraction. When you're. And we don't, we're not talking in terms of cash balance here. We're talking about appropriated budget. So when your appropriated funds get low. That's when you come back and you ask for an additional appropriation if.
What we did last year and.
And that's that's how, and that's exactly what you did last year. That's when we shifted that expense out of your budget line items into. Human cash.
It's a volatile budget. We know that, like it's an unpredictable volatile budget. The commissioners, the council are prepared to have to juggle that. I mean, there's no sense in ever overfunding something because. Because the current auditor doesn't have to put any money, let us put any money.
My 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 only question, my only question would be. And then if if we don't, if we don't pay for this out of ARPA or human capital or anything else, what what is? Some major emergency expense you think could happen? You've replaced the lift station, correct? And now we're gonna replace the well. So what would be the next?
Electrical.
Okay, but but if the electric goes out, there's not gonna be enough money in your budget to do it.
That should be taken. Well, and the other thing is, is honestly, and I'm just gonna throw throw my park board hat on for our friend friendship hat or whatever, department, department. At some point, we just get those sites set up to be metered on their own. Partner with Nipco and it's almost all other campgrounds across the United States are doing that. We're losing money because I mean. The county, county taxpayers are putting money into that that asset and obviously they get to use the beach and everything. So that's great. You know, it's nice having a lot of people around, but. There are ways it could become more economical and I know the park board has discussed that in the past. That would be the the next.
Seasonable site. That's not the weekend orders.
That's kind of where I'm at right now is is without having it in front of me or what I last. Because it's been. Few years now that we've we've been operating this on our own without. You know, we've gotten things straightened out from the days of the. You know, getting that. In front of me to see overall what the revenues versus the versus the expenses are. Um and then. If that shows a a year-to-year. What discrepancy or loss or or insufficiency in as far as revenues generated concerns, then we'll talk about. Taking money from outside your budgets for some of these projects. So for now, from what I've heard, I think we'll be safe. With you guys taking this out of the park board budget and then again, we'll address. Further expenditures after we have um more of the year, we start collecting more revenues. And and necessary some of the. Un- unexpected things or or we. Start planning for an electrical upgrade and that's the sort of thing we'll discuss. Actually using funds from outside your budget to to address. Uh yeah, that's my motion for um to approve this paid out the park board budget.
Yeah, just a question. I think I think it'd be a good idea to maybe start getting votes for that though, for the meters. Just as other project money becomes available because I think it's developing that asset. I don't think we got anything for that in that um. Grant that that. So I I think, but I think that's important. I mean, we own that asset. It's important that. E- even if things change, I think we'll still have some seasonal spots if somebody had said not the not the over, you know, just the ones that come a weekend or you call them. Um you know, that thing. Um the other thing was is last year, um. I came to the commissioners. I can't remember what the context was, but it was about the park board. Um and you, it was about just revenue and and you know what the council knew about revenue and things like that. And you had with the suggestion that I contact the park board. Um and ask them to get a cash register program running out there. Um and then there was discussion back and forth that they wanted cell phones, but we have internet out there, so they we should be able to set them up through IT. Our IT director said we have extra computers around if we had to go that route, but I think. I I don't know if anybody's gotten an update. I've had people on the council board asking me too, where are we standing with that? But where do we, so? I'm just asking while you guys are here, do we have the cash register system set up out there and?
No, it's due last fall when that was all done.
Yeah, I remember you texted me. You said something like, you know. No, I said absolutely that the commission asked you to do that.
It was gonna go to Stanley. I am gonna ask the credit card company for the little handhelds. You know, that way you can just walk out to the car and that should be part of their.
The the problem is though, is that we cannot collect cash in a in a county government um setting. And not account for it. The fact that we're collecting cash right now and whether you're putting in a cash register now or people hold it in their pocket for a minute before they put it in. All of that's illegal in 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 anything that is government, it has to have accountability for cash that's accepted or. Or you only take electronic payment. Those are the two alternatives. It was one of the big issues that was discussed in a recent state meeting that we spoke about just cash management. And I, you know, we've had that issue in the past where we've had departments where we've had to go back and look at, you know, at cash management, you know, I mean, I know you're doing a great job of depositing it. You know, every night and things like that, requirements, but the handling of it is also regulated.
So what's the answer?
The answer is a cash register system and the money goes right in the cash register as it's run in. Or or a credit card, but you know, there are ways to to get that set up pretty economically.
So that would be up to IT to set up or?
That it's that hard to be honest, you can get a.
I know the credit card thing I can do, but as far as the cash register.
Well, a cash register, buying a cash register is another way to do it. Run a tape at the end of the night, put the tape in, give the tape to the auditor's office.
Run running a card through, you know, that that they're like a three percent.
We do take a loss on picking credit cards. Yeah, that's unavoidable, but at least it gives the public the, you know, the ability to use.
And there were a lot. We had to quit because we had no way to verify them until the next day with our system. And they were declined and stuff, so um if we. I call the pay dog. And get that verified.
I would say um as far as the IT responsibility, it would be to verify that. Secure internet access is is available at the shack and then. I would say the park board would find a vendor solution for an acceptable. Um cash collection. System.
I I base IP based camera there now too that watches the cash register. I mean, because when you have cash on hand, there's a security thing going on there too and. We don't always have a police officer that that stationed there. I mean, I think we should also have a camera that's connected to the internet that feeds.
There are no cameras until, there will be once the grant. That all gets done, but as of now, no additional.
There is a plan in place to give cameras out.
Overlooking maybe into twenty-five by the time the grant is completed, so there is nothing.
Initially with the a three percent transaction theme credit cards, though, I mean, a lot of agencies, including government agencies, are charging that on top.
That goes to the customer, right?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, we would we would have to take the loss that we.
We already set up to do that?
Isn't there some way through our our financial institute that maybe? They have a deal for that? I mean, I don't know.
So our financial software, I mean, that's what we do.
More of a treasurer.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
I mean, she could, she could have a computer out there and do a quiet as I could time my payment comes in.
That's the easiest way to do it is is because we have good, we have fast internet out there. Should be quiet immediately. We have computers, you know, we've retired.
It's the quiet incident right as it comes in.
So what is that involved?
The counter.
Does it, it goes through a computer?
Or or I don't know if the next IT is.
I don't know.
Never, it's like riding a bike, though. You never forget it.
It's a tech.
So I need to know what I'm supposed to do. Now, are we doing the cash register?
They could be, they could, I I mean, effectively, they could be one of the same things. We're just using two different words. They could, they could be, they could, I, I mean, effectively, they could be one of the same things. We, we're just using two different words. Cameras are making sure that the internet is reliable and secure enough.
So let me understand your guidance. Where does that go? Is that going to the county general fund? Why can't we take money on that carryover and put it into our?
You, you can. It has to be appropriate. Straight now, it's not a vertical creative change. So, so when we, when, when you run out of your appropriation.
Then you come back and ask.
Equipment and repair. Once that gets down to zero, then we will rest.
Carryover money is what funds your appropriation that was approved for twenty twenty four. So your carryover money is funding what the council already approved you to have as a budget for twenty twenty four. If you get short in one of those appropriation lines, you would need to go back to the council.
Okay, right.
It's like cash in the bank that you have to draw.
I asked.
About the actual one. Everybody else got that.
I get it.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
This is easy. I'm not asking for any money.
No typos this time. Well, actually I do have some money on here.
I know. That's totally different than this one. I'm gonna come and ask for a lot of money over there. Not for this one. I don't think we have typos. Do we have typos?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't think much of it. I'm pretty particular about that. That would, that would not be.
Oh, no.
I'm not much of a typer.
Oh, I don't know what. I don't remember if it's just typo or.
It, it is me too at the same time. So we are asking for an evidence technician, just approval of the job description. Um, we don't need any separate funding or salary ordinance, anything. We're just looking to take it out of a part-time jailer position. Which is on a pay-based kind of thing now. It serves at fifteen nineteen an hour. Um, so we sent you all the information. Do you guys have any questions?
It's like it's pretty similar to what we did with EMS, you know, here recently.
Mm-hmm.
Make the movement. Um, uh, um, convert a part-time jailer position into an evidence technician. As defined in this job description.
You'd be nuts. Thank you.
We're gonna be in one of those. Yes. You know, I did wanna bring up one other thing. We did, if on the. Throw a hotline. That's anonymous throwing a hotline to the sheriff department. We don't track it. It doesn't go anywhere other than that, um. Into that answering machine. Just want to let you guys know, we're gonna, we'll be making up some posters and uh. Little like refrigerator magnets that we're gonna pass out. We have a, a couple of different events that are coming up and we'll pass them out then. Um, but it's a good. Some we needed a long time.
Yeah.
I didn't get to, that's good.
Right.
I know, I know you guys like.
Brilliant.
Thanks, Jack.
That's, oh, I've heard. That would be nice. For the general discussion of our. I didn't think of that.
Yeah.
We'll come out. More than mayor. Oh, yeah.
Alright. In the last few weeks, we've been able to remove our plow when we started on spring operations. I know I probably just jinxed the part of my saying that. We have started on preventative me- measures on roadways that will be worked on for the twenty twenty three dash zero two C C M G project, which is the chip conceal on total road between highway twenty three and twelve hundred D's. As well as eleven fifty heat between two twenty five south and six twenty five south. This includes checking culverts in burms along the stretches of roadway as well as brush maintenance. We've had crews out for the last several weeks checking culverts all around Stark County and we are gathering a list of culverts that. Will need to be changed this year. Several cru- crews still go out patching every day as we try to keep up with maintaining the roadways. With the nice weather lately, we have also been able to complete a lot of our outstanding brush work. That has been reported during winter months. In the next few weeks, we're gonna start bringing in, bringing out our summer equipment from the warehouse and. Begin performing maintenance on the tractors, paver, chip spreader. So whether states like it has been, we may start our mowers a little earlier this year um, as well. Our training on March eighth, L T A P came to Stark County Highway Department to present on a drainage and how drainage affects the roadways. Um, Purdue Road School, March twelfth and thirteenth, several employees went to attend Purdue Road School at Purdue University. This year there were over thirty two hundred attendees. Which was way too close for my, my heart level. Um, everything with bridge number one thirty seven and fifty nine are still on schedule. We did not receive the funding for bridge thirteen, but we learned. Some insights at road school as far, as far as how we should be presenting this particular bridge in the future. Um, we will be going for the next round of funding on this bridge because it is still one of our deficient bridges in Stark County. It's rated at a four now, but it's. More, um, you know, it's not near a big city or it's more agricultural. So I have to, we have to learn it. Me, crossing grants, everything with the train crossing grants are still on schedule. We will be finding out soon. We were awarded the twenty twenty four dash zero one C C M G project. Twenty twenty three dash zero two with that chip seal program. Uh, retirement. I wanted to give a big thank you to Terry McDaniel. He's recently retired from Stark County Highway. Department last month and thank you for his years of service. I wasn't gonna put a picture in here, but I didn't find a picture that we. Oh. We don't mind. Can I still go through the cameras? So. Our current G P S system is through Verizon Fleet Matic. So you guys do have a Verizon bill in front of you. Um, we pay around one thousand two hundred twenty seven dollars per month at the moment for seventy one devices. These devices shows where fleet is located twenty four seven and traffic violations. We've had Verizon Fleet Matic in place for about ten years now. Um, Verizon Fleet Matic's costs continue to rise. So we started looking around for a comparable option and pricing um, those options. Currently the M S department uses fleet complete. Um, so below in my monthly report, I listed what fleet completes costs were. So for vehicle tracking and camera on thirty five vehicles, it's thirty nine and twenty five per month. Vehicle tracking only for thirty five vehicles is nineteen twenty five per month. So a lot of our equipment that we have out there, we don't need to put cameras on, you know, the chipper and paper, stuff like that. So. The thirty five vehicles that don't have the cameras is more equipment, equipment. The with cameras will be the trucks. Um, fleet insight, advanced not only provides twenty four seven real time. Locations and traffic violations, but always has a, it also has a system for engine diagnostics. So it'll be, it'll have the ability to report engine code, codes, battery voltages, uh, ignition status. Just kinda neat. Um, there's no cost for the device itself during March promotion, which will save us twenty four thousand eighty five. Um, there is a cost to have fleet complete install it if our mechanics can't install it, but I believe our mechanics can.
And we already have, and this was included in what we addressed earlier with forty, forty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, cause we, hey, I mean, we are already paid. We are ready, are budgeted for about twelve hundred dollars a month for G P S. So I just, the extra that, that I needed was for the cameras, uh, to include the cameras. The other thing that um, we wanted to bring up today was our traffic counters no longer work. Um, the software is not compatible with. This software is old. It's not compatible anymore. So I gave you a quote for a traffic counter. Ideally, we would like to, um, but we can work with one too. It's just something, um.
Yeah. This was brought up last year because the. Existing system was old and broken and not, um.
Why do you?
If it's, if we, if it, if, when it works. It's iffy on if it's going to stay working.
Mm-hmm.
Um, yeah, I was, yeah. Um, and this is. It's first, first sign is three grand each. And you're only asking for one sign.
Well, we would like to, but we'll do a point.
Cause we got, cause we got these signs.
Huh?
There's a price for one.
Yes, that's price for one.
Cause we got owners.
Yes.
You know, somebody.
L T A P.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what somebody else have the traffic counter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can get it from L T A P. It's just they're.
They're.
You know, limited on.
When we can get it.
It's all the way down.
Yeah.
Far away too.
Well, I am this year. Base point or auto.
Yeah, I'm, I must, must, yeah.
Need this.
Yeah. I will. For two of them at uh, four thousand fifty dollars a piece. So.
I'll second that.
On favor.
Bye.
Maybe you guys do the appropriation on our. Please.
So, so this, this, this traffic counter has, actually has the speed limit on it too. Well, how much is the traffic counter without the speed limit on it?
I know.
I mean, I'm just curious because. I don't know. Is, is it worth spending all? It's gotta be considerably more with radar.
I think it's, it's of interest to us because we also need to update our ordinances for speeding in the county on the roads and this would be helpful to find out just how combined everybody, you know.
But then.
Well, I think the traffic comes covered to be too based on the wheelbase and the time it takes to hit the counter too. Without.
Maybe we just do it on two then.
Uh, you know, it's just one good.
Yeah.
Do calculate.
Yeah.
I'm only gonna ask because I know that the question will be asked later on. Um, what part of the ARPA funds would be?
That's what I was getting ready to go to. Yeah, cause they didn't mention that. Since it's part of the highway department, I would suggest infrastructure. So if you wanted to make your motion before we. I'll make a motion that we take eighty one hundred dollars out of ARPA infrastructure for the um, highway. Um. Radar sign. Funding.
I'll second it.
Have a motion a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, I.
I.
Is there any opposed?
I'm staying.
Sorry. Six eyes, one extension.
Yeah, you know.
Yeah.
Before I um, go through with this, I'm gonna see. What it is without it.
I'm, I'm curious. I mean, probably. Might build a bike for them for the price.
Yeah.
Up to two.
Yeah.
I'm not being negative, but I haven't voted against anything all day.
I'm being asked to amend my motion. I'll amend my motion up to eighty one hundred dollars based on what the dimensions decide. I'm happy with the research.
Okay.
He will look into it. Maybe we'll get three.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just, I'm not trying to be.
No.
Just trying to look out for a month. We have a motion a second up to eighty one hundred. Is there any other further discussion besides what uh, Councilman Lineball brought up? Um, all those in favor, I.
I. I.
I. Is there any opposed? Are you guys?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Um, all.
Are you guys ready no more?
No, actually, um, if you don't mind, I wanted to talk to the highway. It goes into your next one anyways with ARPA.
Yeah.
But there's a couple of things that I wanted to, this personal ideas, this is just one of seven. I'm not, I'm not saying it's other ideas, but. As the person that you, a couple of years ago, I, I was appointed as kind of the solar liaison and so, um. I've, it, it hasn't always been great, but I've had a lot of feedback from the public. Um, in fact, when Brock got hired, when things really went off the rails over there on the roads. Brock and I went door to door and I talked to people about the roads over there. Um, and you know, and, and. This was in that, at Next Terra, but you know, I, I really am thinking about Mammoth also. I, I've talked to Rachel about this a few times, um, and I think Mammoth has just done better. Because it has a stronger base, so it hasn't sustained as much damage. But I also think, and I was talking to Rachel this morning, is. The crown has always been a problem out there too. And so I don't think it drains as well and then it gets mixed and it gets pounded. But, um. I talked to a lot of people out there that have a lot of misery. I. You know. Both of our groups, we, we didn't bring solar here, you know, but we're, we're trying to make it more friendly. And we knew, we knew, but with the road use agreement, we knew there was gonna be some damage. So this is what I'm suggesting is that. One of the things that the public has, has asked about is that will the roads be better? A- after this is done and you know, and, and the road use agreement says the road has to be returned to how it was prior to that, which. So in some cases it's hard not to make it better and we talked about that. Um, and so, um, just so the public knows, we had a, a, a camera engineering firm. Map all of our roads, do a video map of our roads. So we both know what condition was, but, um. As a solar liaison, not stepping out of my lane because Todd was there, Don was there. Um, but I joined also, we had a recent meeting, Next Terra with planning commission. We all sat down and we talked about the roads. Um, and you know, they, they basically brought that up like, you know, hey, like, you know, that's our commitment. But I will say, so let me go back to what we have out in Next Terra. We already do have something better because it's wider. We've got about eleven inches of a base that's been pounded down, pounded down. And so the opportunity to have better roads there i- is. Very, very high, very high likelihood. Um, but. Those people in those areas have suffered, e- especially because of the roads. So without staying on my soapbox too long, I want to discuss two hundred thousand dollars from ARPA infrastructure set aside. To make sure that it will be better in certain cases, sometimes for sure, because one of the questions that I had, and I don't know a lot about roads. But I've studied my L T A P stuff over the years and know about chip seal versus uh, hot mix and cold mix, things like that. And one of the questions I asked during that meeting was. If it's gonna be the same price, because they were talking about a three A product where they just put chip and seal, three layers of chip and seal is pretty expensive. It might be the same price to do a hot mix or even a cold mix, but a better, in other words, a better road than what those people have now. So what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we commit two hundred thousand dollars as a, a set aside. Um, to make sure that if, if in this certain stretch and we go eh, we don't, we don't think a three A is gonna be good enough and they're. Ten thousand dollars or what, twenty thousand away, but that's already committed now. So the question would be, well, what if they don't? Then we put it into the roads in those areas anyways for other things. It, I mean, if they're already getting the better road, but I just. I wanna make sure that like, you know, something from the county government to reach out to the people that have been affected by solar to say. We're gonna do, we're gonna guarantee something better for you.
But this, this is gonna be two hundred thousand setback for any solar damage. I mean.
Yes, because before, before the end of this, we'll already, cause the other thing is we have to spend it by the end of twenty six. We'll be fixing those roads before then.
Right.
So this would be extra money guaranteed.
Can't think it's all going for them.
Right, it'd be, it'll be.
Bass Lake or.
Yeah, yeah, but, but you know, right, but the primary, it would be mammoth or, or next terror, but you know, the damage that, you know, in that prepare, repair process. You know, that way there's just something to guarantee it. And I, I just, I haven't talked to any of the residents about that. But when we went door to door, one of the things that I, I have to say, like, I was, I was surprised and Brock, you can attest this. But I was surprised at how friendly they were about talking about it, you know? Now, what I did observe on a lot of those is there are a lot of situations where people park very close to the road. So I can see that, I, I can see why that aggravates them when it gets dusty because they're, they just wash their cars, park there and you know, and it just. It's, it's kind of odd even that. By zoning that at that time, that's some of the way those are. I don't know if you've been out there, but some of them, like, it's right next to the road. So my. I would even think that like, somebody brought up on, um, a while back about. Dust control. And we talked to them about dust control in that meeting we were at and how calcium chloride reacts with the, with the aggregates. And, and in theory it hardens and almost like calcium chloride, uh, hardens concrete and that's how it controls the dust. But people have asked about oil products. I personally asked about that thing. I meant, I learned from L T A P about the soy-based oil that's supposed to be better. Corn, there's a corn-based one too. Um, but that, that money could even like it if. I'm even thinking like it could go for that. Like if we saw a need for some extra thing, but two hundred thousand dollars extra for anything along, making people feel better in there. Sorry.
So I, uh, I do view the ARPA money as taxpayer money, um. That, that money was either, you know, printed off the printing presses wide open or tax dollars went into building the ARPA fund. Um, we were told that. Not a single tax dollar would be put towards this, that, that the solar industries would be covering this out in our pockets. Um.
Yeah, that's why I'm wording it better. So in other words, they're, that, all they have to do right now is bring it back to what it was then. What I'm saying is add something extra for those residents.
But what I was gonna get at was I would see it more advantageous for, let, let's say Hoover Solar to instead of. Going and, and giving money to. To instead of going and, and giving money to. The fairgrounds and then showing up later to the fair board meetings, passing out T-shirts, that money. Could have been better to, went to building the roads back better, um I feel, I do feel like. How I'm telling the citizens that no tax dollars is going to be put towards this, that. Who's the, who's the company that we want to cover all of it, you know, by, by putting ARPA funds for it.
I will say that I'm just one of ten.
Yeah, and I'm one of those people that's suffering from the crappy.
I understand, yes.
The trail of dust left behind me yesterday as we drove down four hundred south. Someone else in the car pointed it out and it was hideous, but. That being said, I do not think it's fair to have the taxpayers all over the county funding. This road, you know, bringing the roads back better when it really should be the responsibility of these companies. That are cleaning up financially at our expense.
Well, here, here's my response to that, Cassie, if you don't mind, the way I look at that is that the people in the county, the other people that aren't in solar are gonna benefit from the solar money. So I mean, I think it's, it's a trade-off, you know what I'm saying, like, why shouldn't they, solar, the people that are affected by solar. And you know, get some of the royalties from, from that, it's, it's in exchange, like, I think we need to look at it as. You know, we are nine townships in a county that we're working together to do things, and so I just, like I said, I just. And you know what, since, since there are some residents here, if you guys don't agree with that, that's great, it's just the people that I went door to door, like. They were surprisingly patient, I mean. Now, I will admit too, there was a couple of them that literally screamed at me a couple of times on the phone, and I went and I saw them personally too, Brock went one time with me. Um to, to visit somebody, and so I get it, I mean, people are upset, I'm just saying that. If you don't spend time in San Pierre, San Pierre is just as beautiful as rest of the county, and, and they, well, but, but the opportunity to make it better than it was, and that's all I'm saying, it's better. You know, I'm one of ten in this situation, so I'm just, maybe, maybe, maybe here's a.
Compromise is the word, is the right word, but. If we would, I'm just saying if, if we would use the ARPA money for that two hundred thousand, okay? With that being said. We should designate another two hundred thousand out of solar. Or something else to offset using that money. Okay, let's say we were gonna, I'm just saying this for instance, we were gonna give. Hundred thousand dollars, San Pierre Park, and a hundred thousand dollars to whoever. So, instead of doing that, if we said, okay, we will use our money now. For the possible upgrade, but. In turn, that two hundred thousand will be offset by any solar money, so.
Solar, the, what the companies have to agree to those terms.
No, because, no, 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 it's coming directly to us, they have no say over what we do with that money.
It's hard for us to negotiate more with the solar company, I mean.
Essentially, then you're spending four hundred thousand dollars of the county's money, not, you're not negating the first two hundred thousand. You're taking two hundred thousand dollars that could have been used for something else and putting it towards to cover the money.
And, and you know, we can't really read, we have a contract already with them that we're already getting about over one point four million that we're gonna put in all kinds of projects, so. The fair board going to them, uh that's smart, like, I would, I would, I would advise it in all the areas. You know, if they can work something out, I mean, if these solar companies wanna be good neighbors, they're doing things. And, and you know, tho- those aren't county deals, like, if they wanna do that, that's up to them, I mean, why not, like, we're, we're talking about going for grants for all kinds of other things. So, sorry.
May I request some ARPA funds for non-solar roads in rural township that we've had to abandon because we can no longer use.
Those are projects should be evaluated and. Cause I'm not as keen as, as you seem to be, count those chickens sort of hatched. Once we get those, start getting, receiving those revenues, we can evaluate those projects, and we definitely will be evaluating those projects. For now, I am not. My nature's reaction to what you just said, sounds like we're, we're almost willing to. Cut. Next era a bit of a break and I'm, that's not something I'm. Amenable to, if we're going to throw money at a, at roads out there, I think we should be um building up. The roads that are planned to exist within the next phase of that project. So that we don't find ourselves in the same situation where their best proposal is for us to. Tear up our roads.
Just, just so it's clear.
And that's, cause that is, that was.
We don't wanna fix them now and right there among.
Did, did, well, no, but at least, at least.
Did, did, did they do pazer ratings on any of those roads before?
Yes, we did pazer ratings on them, so we have pazer ratings.
So that's, that, that right there is a, is a very, very important thing to this whole thing. Um, I have done pazer rains for St. Joe County, Carroll County, Cass County, I've done them all over northern Indiana. Even for the federal government, and that's right there is like the big thing. Because pazer rain is basically one to nine. It evaluates the road, there's all this crazy criteria that's involved in it, so if those roads, I don't know what the pazer rain am on, I'm gonna guess it's probably three or four.
Before.
Before, was it, was it three or four?
They're just required to put it back to.
Back to where it was, which is gonna be a three or a four.
So, and how, and.
I mean, it's still gonna have to be paved, they were paved roads, so.
They weren't all paved roads.
But they were made out of chips. Not paid.
I, I, I think, I, I think, I think when it's all said and done, you know, the, the three, the three loads chip seal. Are not gonna be costing that in over.
I mean, the pazer rating, I think, is, is part of the key focus.
Yeah, it is.
And that's why I bring up the other roads that are gonna be. Be affected.
That's, that's really, that's.
I said no public yet.
You've been calling on public.
Oh, the two hundred thousand, you're talking about, is that like fix the road that Deb talking about?
Well, I think, I think it will be the ownerships and the, and the highway department discretion, but it would, the primary use would be for solar roads, as I was saying, it sounds like. It sounds like it's a bad idea, it sounds like the public's against it too, I just. I had my own ideas and so I just, since we had the highway department here, but I just thought. You know, if there was an opportunity, like, even if it was like. Like ten thousand for a section, it was in front of, like, I said, I visited those houses, we drove all those roads and people that were home, we stopped and talked to them. Some of them are just so close, and so maybe, maybe that section could have been like, just improved in some way, I, again, now, now digress and say, I'm not a road expert. But maybe there was a, a way to make it better, I just, there's this. I, I, you know, I, I mean, it's our, it's part of our assets.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea to use ARPA toward infrastructure into the roadways and purchase system, if that's what you wanna do.
Well, like I said, I just wanted to, I wanted to make it towards the solar people, but like I said, I'm not making motion yet, so I'll take my. I'll take my, my idea back, and I would, I would say another thing would be. In talking a lot of people already, because it goes hand in hand as a way to interface the trails and the kayak development with the highway department, cause a lot of those funds overlap. And then.
Now, you were, you were talking about them returning those roads to, to where they were what they. Now, I'm just an old farm boy, I'm not all that smart, but if they're out there repairing those roads. If we took a portion of that money and improved them even greater, that would be the efficient time to do it. In my humble opinion, just like Dave's talking.
No, I, I.
And I, and, and here's the thing, uh you don't put all your money in, in car tires today. You got nine different townships, one township's gonna need something today and another one's gonna need it tomorrow. And we're talking about the collective haul of the town.
And, and, and I, and I didn't see that as a waste of money, because I think the roads will last longer too, I mean, yet granted, I know a lot of people are probably thinking, not many people live out there. But, um, it just, they're gonna last longer, it's gonna look nicer, I just, you know, like I said, I just. You know, I, I think to an extent, I thi- I think there may be some ways to compensate some of the people out there for some of their pain, but. You know, we spoke with Cassie too, like, maybe that's, maybe that's a bad idea then, cause she lives there, so I'll defer to, you know, her feelings on it.
Well, to drive that road almost every day, and it makes me furious every time I do, but I don't wanna see the rest of the county have to pay. We're improving that road at this point that has been destroyed by this particular industry.
Someone ask a question, please. Dave's comments, I understand what he was saying, the, the, my understanding is that the. Solar companies are required under contract to put these roads back to where they were when they started, right? To have those. Performing at the level they were before they tore them up. Whose job is it, is it yours, Rachel's, whose job is it to see? That those roads are brought back to where they should be.
It'll be ours.
It'll be the county highway staff, okay? And so I think that, I think what Dave was saying. And, and I think what's really important is, is that we make sure they're brought back to. Cause that might be different opinions, I mean, somebody might have an opinion that they are, and, and I'm sure somebody's gonna have an opinion that they were not. Right, would we all agree with that?
The qualifying criteria will be the pazer rating, it's done after, after their work is completed.
Thank you for that, so once we find out, are these roads are brought back to snuff to where they should be, and, and you determine that. I, I, I think that's Dave's point, is not to fix their mess, but to go over and beyond. And to make these roads better, and I, I don't know that we should leave it just for that small area, it should be a countywide. Situation, because there's more solar work, solar work would be done.
That's what I understood, so like, let's say they go and they put all these roads back to, you know, how they were, or most likely they're gonna be much better. I mean, I'm sure the page reading is gonna be much better, but what Dave was saying, how I understood it, like, let's say, okay. Four hundred south needs a little more burn work, you know, okay, taking the money then from whatever you wanna designate to put into. More burn work on four hundred south or where, wherever.
Because we feel it needs more burn.
And that's what I wanted to kind of s- make a point that. We're not cutting the cable, I'm sorry, the, we're not cutting the solar companies any slack. You guys are gonna make sure this road was damaged and it, okay, it's past, it's brought where it should be. And then if we want to improve on it more, we can.
That's what I, how I.
Un- unfortunately, the, the, the major thing is, is the profiled road, okay? The road has no profile, which, which is the crown, it should be, should be a quarter inch per foot, two percent. To get the water, water destroys the road faster than anything in the whole world, and those roads are flat, totally flat. And when we did meet with, with them, they did say they were gonna. We're gonna try to bring up the brown road, because that's gonna be advantageous to them, because it'll get rid of the water, so they have less, less maintenance. With that being said. I don't, if those roads are a three or a four, I don't know, and they go out there and chip seal and do all that, they might be maybe a six. If they go out there and we can get them the hot mix, that, that it's gonna be a nine. I mean, so. And that's, it's, it's, it's subjective, but it's not subjective, the criteria is pretty, pretty well defined. I mean, you and I could go out and do it, you might get a seven and a half, I might get a six and a half or eight, and I mean, it's very subjective. So. I think a lot of it, I don't know if we have to really think about it now. Maybe we're trying to be proactive, but maybe when it comes down like, well, town and country, you know the Rubanskis? That own it, I, I know, I, I, I know them, and I know the. The estimator is Mark Slaughter, who lives in Wheatfield, I know all them personally, I've dealt with them for years, so. Without, without coercing, I think would be the word, if. When the point gets closer, I mean, we could probably almost talk to them, they would probably, I think Mark would probably tell me. Okay, we can do this road for whatever, ninety thousand, that's what it's gonna be a chip seal. But if we put out, it's gonna be a hundred. I don't know. And, and even at that point in time, I think that. Possibly, if you go with the solo code, where you say, hey, are you gonna be really the good neighbors, you say you're gonna be?
And you know what I would say if I was them though, I'm giving you one point four million dollars.
I'm not taking public comments, I'm gonna talk Deb, and then that public comes up when it comes up.
But that's my thoughts, so, for what's worth.
I agree. I will be misquoted if I don't get to finish, so I do not disagree with Dave's proposal at all. But I am saying there are roads right now that are much worse than their solar roads, I have friends who are eighty seven years old. Who can't get out of their home, and their daughter is scared to death to drive eight fifty. Is it west going to their home because it's terrible? We can't drive our equipment down the road, there's nine hundred west, nobody lives down that road, so we just let it go, it's just dirt. They're worse. Fine, make them better, once you're gonna make them, make them better, I agree. But let's compare, there are impassable roads that are not solar, that people are afraid to travel on over there. We can travel on those solar roads safely, they're dusty, but we can use them. But yes, build back better.
Okay, then I'll digress on my idea, but maybe just some extra money for the highway department to fix roads that they normally wouldn't build if it.
We can always use that too.
Yeah, and. If we're gonna throw money at roads, I would really like to see it, it's feasible. To increase the pazer rating of the roads we know that are going to be affected by the further um. Phases of these projects.
So basically, you want us to re-pazer the phase two of Next Era. Pretty much, before they start.
Right.
That's not, and that's, that's not reasonable request.
What I'll, what I'll do then is, I don't worry about the number right now, but I mean, it's supposed to come today, it's talked about, I wanted to bring up another thing, I know it's up, the highway garage. And I actually, before you took over, Don, I had um sent uh, uh Charlie some. Things that I saw with these hoop buildings.
Yeah, that's what I was.
And I've seen those for like, up to fifty thousand.
Right.
So I don't know if might be a good idea just looking those, I, I've seen where they take.
Ton blocks and stacked them, yeah, we, we had one, well, Timco, we had one for our sand.
Yeah, I mean, it's just racing there and dump and it's.
That's an expense we would have.
Can we agree with up to now, like, right now, the quote I have is forty six thousand, and that's just rebuilding current salt. But we do need to look into what Johnson has, I haven't seen it.
That's what Cassie just said. Well, we don't spend today, we can still spend it by the end of the year, at least we can have an idea of what we need, so I don't know, I mean, I, but I think we should, we should look at this all.
You have a motion on it.
Uh, well, I don't know if Rachel's thinking that fifty isn't enough.
Maybe get a fir- more firm number before we take this particular action.
Well, you want the council to approve up to, so you can at least have it and get it started, that way we just get it done.
Up to.
No, the, the new salt shop, is that what you're saying now?
Yep.
And Charlie, obviously you were up in the board.
Because we don't wanna run into concerns with water getting in there, then we're gonna have ground run up, so.
Five acres of our farm from that salt running all our.
Yeah, that, that's why it's there, and we don't want that again.
No.
We don't wanna.
I wonder, um, move to uh. Up to fifty thousand dollars. We can't repair that old.
Fifty thousand, we're right, I've had Louis up there several times, and there's lots of stop signs now up there and everything, but it's.
We, we know those are repair truck floors.
Before we talk or vote on that. Could you guys explain like why the salt shed issue is important, like what you were just.
Well, years ago, they were, it would just be piled out there. And, and so when they'd come in with their loaders, they would actually move. All the material across the fence line, so it's mixed with salt and sand, and when it rains, that salt would run off, the water would run off. And it, it actually destroyed about five acres of farmland, plus uh the, the groundwater. So that's, that's why that needs to be done, and it, and it only makes sense if you have an investment like that, is to protect the investment.
Yeah, because we lose that salt.
When we were talking about it, I just wanted to make sure that it was picked up on the microphone and then the public gets this here, but here. But the roof can't be repaired, I mean.
Didn't have some that side of.
It's, it's, it's got, it's got country laws up probably for. I mean.
But we can't build off of that.
Can't build off really rough the way it is.
We might be able to use, if it's got a concrete floor in it, we might be able to cap it.
Yeah, it's got a concrete floor, absolutely. No, because they're the wrong, the wrong configuration. I mean, round is not good, stuff like that.
We have a motion, um, from Bruce for up to a hundred thousand dollars for repair or replacement of the salt shed. Is there a second? And a second from Todd. Is there any further discussion? Um, is there any further discussion?
Arpa infrastructure.
Uh, good question from Cassie. So that would be from Arpa infrastructure. Yes, from Arpa, from Arpa infrastructure. Um, any other further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. So we'll leave that to commissioners then to make that decision.
I'm gonna finish this meeting and we'll go back to the Arpa day.
Okay.
That way, where I'm going.
We really need to consider that. At least fix the trend. At least fix the trail.
Pharaoh claimed eighty-five thousand nine.
So moved.
Second. Yeah, it's gonna be. Motion to accept the plane through six hundred and sixteen, four forty-nine.
I, I'm sorry, that wasn't me. Is it okay? Do you mind? Uh, so as a breakout for the council, I have before me the minutes from Tuesday, February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. If somebody would like to make a motion.
Minutes.
The minutes from, uh, Sept- uh, February twenty, twenty twenty-four. If somebody would like to make a motion. From the two Tonys. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Uh, and then we have the incumbents before us also.
Commissions are usually done in January. I just didn't have any because of what you guys approved for EMS in December. I didn't have any ready in January. And then I completely forgot and then it's.
Does everybody know what incumbences are? Yeah, everybody's been around government for a while. Basically, there were bills that didn't get paid. We tried to make the cut for twenty twenty-three.
Yeah. Yeah, like that, the dream.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the incumbences in the amount of thirty-five thousand, one forty-eight eighty-eight for funds one one six nine. Fund one 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 two forty thousand, eight twenty-seven and eight cents. Fund one thousand. One hundred and sixty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and twelve cents. Pardon me?
It was beautiful.
It was?
I'm sorry, Todd, thanks.
Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Uh, yes.
I wanna go back to the Arpa fun, uh, fun discussion. I'm gonna leave Charlie in charge. I gotta leave in ten minutes. And Dave, it'll be Charlie and Dave running.
Um, okay, so I think we're, the build back better thing on the road. And I think maybe we've got till the end of the year to think about that. I thought that's what I'd out there. I, I was gonna maybe individually send this out because I normally at least talk to council. I thought, I didn't want anybody to think that I tried to pre-plan. Like and promote by just my own agenda. So that's why I haven't ever brought this up to you guys before. Just so it doesn't get, get me in trouble. Um, you already, uh, we looked at the salt shed. Um, Mark's aware of this. We have a communications, uh, committee. Um, I don't know that we need to buy them this year, but definitely by twenty twenty-six. Our, our council radios and, uh, dispatch are gonna outdate. It's about seventy-five thousand dollars to replace those. Um. As I was suggesting, um, that we do that. The fire departments, I, I heard from a couple of fire departments and I know we already spent community money, but I feel like this would still fall under lost revenue. Because they would usually ask EMS for replacements of things, um, if, if, if they, uh, you know, ran out. And what I was told was between a thousand and two thousand dollars, um, came out of their budgets extra for PPE. So I was gonna ask for two thousand dollars. Twice is fourteen here. We have seven fire departments. Two thousand dollars for each fire department to re- replace their PPE that they used during COVID because, you know, as pointed out earlier, this is less COVID money. I just put courthouse because I know that the commissioners had been working on some projects. I think we need to. To fix the courthouse. So that just isn't out of our budget since we have that money there. We already talked about the annex sewer. I put cor- coroner reefer here. Um, I, I. Personally, I spoke a while back with, with Howard. Um, Howard's a previous coroner. Um. We keep running out of space. Um, and, and actually it was corrected by our current coroner. Um, there was a, a quote, um, fairly recently to add six more spaces in the cooler for thirty-three thousand dollars. I'm just gonna write a thirty-three there. Um, and I also put planning commission light, um. It's, I, I haven't talked to Howard lately, but I didn't, a lot of the times, like, one of the things we're trying to make the county nicer, and I know we put money back into the. Planning commission light, but that's more of a future thing by the end of the year. Though I think if the planning commission has some. More projects about tearing something down or making something look better. I don't know. This was just me thinking out loud. Please feel free to add to the list to the others. Um, and then I also put broadband up here because I know that, um, you made a letter of intent in your last meeting, but I can't remember. Didn't we say we were gonna take that from Arp, propose Arpa for that? That was five hundred thousand, correct? So, uh, but that's important because that, you know. That, that is county infrastructure, even though we don't own it. It's infrastructure for the county for us all to have.
And broadband is what specifically one of the things, yeah, the items listed as far as uses for Arpa.
Is exactly. So, you know, um, that takes a big chunk out of it, but I put it there just so we wouldn't forget some. I don't know, cause Don, if you're leaving, if you wanted to talk about any of those.
I'd like to add, what, how, what do you say? We're paying for the standings too. It's in the process. We're waiting on the. For the, uh, extra running.
I'd put that in line with.
Dave, you also need to put the pay raises on there because you guys funded the ten percent pay raises last year with Arpa.
That's right.
So unless you're thinking about in another avenue at this time, you do need to save money.
We need to put that in our, our twenty, uh, five fiscal. So, um, yes, the pay raises and how much is that?
It's about seven hundred thousand.
That'd be ten percent.
Seven hundred thousand. So we're already out of money. So we won't be able to do all of that.
Right.
Then I, I think, I think hearing input from everybody, but I think we're at the total now because we're at one point two million. A, a million in, um, infrastructure and two hundred thousand in lost revenue. So, so.
We get.
And I think we have enough. I had.
No, I'm just, oh yeah, I was just making sure that we, you know, keep everything in mind and all that. You know, the items that both have dollar amounts attached to them and then the other items that we don't have. Uh, dollar amounts attached to yet. That way we can have it in mind every time we revisit this conversation for the remainder of this year. Yeah.
Hey, Dave, why, um, I had Todd Jackson, the chief at North Judson Fire come to me, but. He was talking about the radios they have. I, I mean, he wanted, I said, I'd bring it up because we're gonna talk about Arpa, but now funds, but. He said they have twenty-one eight hundred megahertz radios, twenty-one of them, and they got twenty-five members, uh. Thirteen of the radios are nineteen years old. They stopped making that, uh, making them in two thousand twelve. Uh, Parks Forum stopped in twenty eighteen. Now, he gave me some quotes. He was. He was looking at, he wanted to purchase new, twenty-five new ones for that fire department. Um, he said they did, he did look at grants. He said they would cover maybe like twenty-five thousand roughly, but. Per radio, I think they were. Around, well, the total was.
I think like twenty-five hundred a piece, I think.
Well, he figured some other stuff. I don't know if it was like, he said some strap and I don't know for my ass and stuff, but. I think that come closer to forty-five hundred in radio, uh, cause the totals, well, the totals a hundred roughly, almost a hundred grand.
Could I add to that too, Charlie? The other thing, the other thing I think too, that made some firefighters nervous is, so we addressed that together in the meeting, was that. We funded helping with the Sampear Fire Station. It doesn't mean that we're never gonna help with another fire station.
Which Todd said, you know, effort. I mean, if funds were available, he said he didn't expect the full amount.
Let, let me ask you this. What if we, I'm just throwing this out there. What if we did five thousand per fire department and they could spend it on radios or, or PPE? Either one. That way, if they wanna put that towards the grant, you said they had twenty-five. That's another five thousand. That way, if, if they don't need PPE. They could spend it on communications. And we can bring that up in our communications meeting tomorrow, tomorrow. But Dave.
I don't, I don't know if this is the time and place to mention this, but since the county dispatch radios are up there, uh, I wanted to mention. Also, the dispatch is recording equipment, uh. Once September comes around, it's over.
Yeah.
We need, so we need to. Get some, some new, uh, recording equipment in. It's for much longer.
You know how much it is?
Uh, we don't have a price yet. I've got a couple quotes from different vendors. I need to get Stacy to see that she wants to go.
But, but it's not seventy-five thousand. But it's still the radios that are big. But let's add that to this, because we'll just leave this. Recording equipment.
That cooler's thirty-three on sale from thirty-five.
Let's go quick on this.
We need a towel.
Well, we. Tower, but yeah, I don't know.
Do you have the?
As far as the pay raises go, um, what, what's the, the Arpa funds starting on?
We, we didn't have the money to close that gap before, but we had the Arpa there and because Arpa's there, this still public knows, like, Arpa. It, it really made us look bad because other counties got like fourteen million. So they said, oh, fire department, you have some, you know, this private group, you have it. We got two point six, two point seven million. So like, but what? Well, four point four, but I mean, like, we're using like, you know, sort of like the project things of that. But the thing is, is that. Um, so it kinda made us look bad because a lot of people, it came, I don't, I'm sure you all experienced this too, but hey, you know, I wanna fund this. Daycare center or, you know, like all these, there's so many other things that we wish we could do. It's not that we don't want to. We just didn't get the same kind of money. Um, that everybody else did, so.
But, but with the pay raises, once that money is gone, is. Where, where, where does?
We're hoping to roll that into the budget then, like, catch up to it. So.
Okay, so it will be.
Yeah, great, great question. Just to give you an idea. So basically, um, the way, um, we raise our, and this is really fast, but the way the budget grows. In a county is through the calculator and growth rate. It's been as bad as negative six point six and it's been as good as like nine point two in South County, for example. But. When it's negative, we don't suffer because it's based on the average and they average it out. So usually it's around three percent. So what we try to do is we're forecasting into that, that three percent growth. That, that pay rate. But that's a great question because at some point we are gonna have to pay for that. And so we're making help for that. That's why I mentioned twenty twenty-five and beyond. We'll have to fold that into our budgets and move and make that consideration.
We're looking forward to solar money also too.
Solar money is gonna help us with some, with.
But that, but that, that, that's my, my concern is, you know. The solar money could possibly be just like Arpa money to where it, it might not be there one day, like, not saying it's.
Sure, the solar money's revenue. So, yeah, so like, we're, we're, we've still got the things that we've never. I think the idea is solar money will help us buy a lot of things. I guess.
Yeah, and, and my concern is, you know, using it for pay raises and such, you know. If, when that money isn't there anymore.
I don't think we're for saying that at this point, but it's a great question.
Yeah, it comes back just like a grant. You know, we, we fund the grant, we think, what are we gonna do if, if it goes away?
Before we do get. Any further into the spending of the Arpa money, let's explain to the public that this is money that, that was given by the federal government. And please don't take it that we're trying to just quickly and harshly and hastily spend money. If this money's not ear tagged and spent the way we understand, by the end of this year.
Yeah, ba- basically, yeah.
Right. It has to be fed back to the federal government. So that's, that's why we're kind of. In a, in kind of a rush to spend effectively. And we are limited of what we can spend the money on.
Right. And, and, and it was because of the tax revenue that we lost. We lost during COVID. Like, it wasn't. The other ones, like every, like the other businesses, like we helped them get money. The ones that, that put in for it. You know, there, there were a lot of other dollars that were for that. This simply is for the county. And for the revenue that we lost during COVID for our tax revenue, because there's a lot of things that happened less during that period.
And, 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 and even as, as broad as this whole thing sounds. The feds did hold to that in, in one instance, like the, the police pension. Is always a big contention as to how we're gonna pay. That's one thing we could not pay out. Right. So they actually, I don't like to use the word hindsight. Anything good for the government is good. But they did kinda stick to what they said, you know, in a way on that.
And I just wanna, we're being televised too. I wanna clarify too, because I think the, um. The title of the category, lost revenue, has created a misperception in the minds of some of the public. Where they think it can be applied to money they individually might have lost. Because maybe they lost their job or couldn't go to work. And they don't realize that it can only, it can be, it's the lost revenue from the. Cause I did receive a request from someone for sixty-two thousand dollars to buy like. A minivan and open a little business and things. And people aren't understanding that if you look. Up what lost revenue in Arpa can be spent on, it's not individual people who, um, are looking to open a new business.
Maybe you should say lost county revenue.
Yeah, that, that might have been, made it more clear because I think people are just thinking, oh, I lost, I lost income during COVID.
I've gotten similar points.
Yeah, yeah.
Another thing that you need to keep in the back of your minds is the nine one one fund, uh, is still not supporting itself. So we have one dispatcher, I'm sorry, we have one heat dispatcher and two dispatchers, three employees total. Coming out of Arpa right now. It's still thirteen thousand dollars negative. So nine one one cannot support itself. We, you need to think about this for the future coming years.
There are changes made to how the jail seating will work. At the state legislature this year. We might have avenues to that.
That there's that, and you know, I, you know, I'm glad you brought the state up on, because here's the other thing too is. I've been advocating with our state legislators and I'm not gonna pick on on one of them, because this is, it it seems pretty consistent across the board, so I'm not gonna bash it, but.
I agree with you.
But I'm I'm I have a problem with the fact that the state hasn't put any extra money into that since for twenty three years. But I, they've already told me, forget it, you've got a rainy day fund, you I, I'll help you find the money, you're kind, I don't help find the money. It's just, you know, this, you know, the principle of it, so you know, that's that's the hard part, is they're not willing to do to, I I I don't foresee any help with that. So Tony's, Tony's, Tony's raising a great, a great point too. The other thing was is that the communications uh com- uh committee kinda talked about this first, Mark, you probably remember this, because and then I brought it on behalf of the committee. To the council and to the commissioners, is that the other counties, the municipalities also contribute. A- a- and it's on a, it's a tiered step. And and we tried to get one, but ju- just to point it out, this is what public knows. We did, we did, we did go to those, we, it was the most for Knox and then it trickled down through the others and then they reached out to the state legislators and they said, the county can't make you do that. Well, the county can't, um, you know, but we were, you know, we were just proposing that to, you know, to help offset that too, so.
So we're always gonna lose the better, but.
Yeah, you know, so to the point earlier, that's another thing we'll be rolling into future budgets and we might have to tighten up some things going in twenty five and beyond. You know, to compensate for that as well, like, you know, like, right, right now, the commissions are just faced with, and the council with that thirteen thousand ish. You know, but that's never gonna get better because they won't collect more.
No, in fact, lately it's been, we'll cut, you guys can make up the difference with your late.
Yeah, exactly. So here's the other thing, that was my second part is, a- and you know, I I see that. You know, I, on on some social media posts that people feel like they're already overtaxed in the county where. Um but you know, unfortunately, that's about property tax, and so just so everybody understands, property tax is is based on the value of your home. It's not the county setting that, doesn't mean we're gonna spend more, but don't forget inflation's been like eight percent. We're getting cost of living increases of like three to five percent, so we're covering that shortfall too, so that's what we spend those tax dollars on, but. There is one other thing that Marcus pointed out. There's local in- income tax, I mentioned this before in council meetings, it used to be local option income taxes. And those used to be really great for Marion County and places like that, because they could use all of those. Unfortunately, for small communities, you had to qualify to do that, and so. Um they've changed that and the qualification is different, we qualify for lit taxes and there's a couple of different ones that we can do, you can do. A lit tax for for a special a jail, um and that's one option. The other thing is, is that you can do one to fortify EMS. Or you can do across the board public safety tax and the public safety could be paid. To several different different entities, but I think that the opinion from the public that that at least I've gotten from the people I've talked to is. They don't want taxes raised, and so, you know, that is, that is an easy way out though, for, you know, paying for nine one one, for paying for EMS, for.
Lit right now is what seventeen percent?
That basically proves the point though that, you know, i- if we start to to fund. Programs or salaries off of funds that aren't necessarily always gonna be there. Then eventually the taxpayer shoulder.
I'm pulling Rachel, I'm raising the lit task if we lower the seat of tax.
We are moving the seat of tax money.
You definitely can do that. You can play with this. Oh, they also created a judicial lit tax, so you have a judicial lit tax now that will um support the court. And they're coming out with a lit tax for community hospitals.
We're very well gonna have to, might have to look into that, because we might be facing some issues.
Yeah, yeah, we will be sharing some things down the road, yeah, yeah, well, and since you brought that up, I mean, you know, because for us, the other option too is. And I'm just gonna put that out there is the commi- the current building. Uh where Health Link is is living, they wanna expand, they wanna offer more features to Stark County that we can't get from our our hospital partner. But we're kind of landlocked, and so I'm, I I, we haven't spoken about it lately, but we do have some things going on with a piece of property there, but. We might wanted to start thinking about a financial way of settling that and having room for expansion of that building, just so we can have more services for the people here. Health Link's talked about bringing in a pharmacy, optometry, um there's a lot of other surface services that they've done in communities like ours. Because they help people that can't afford it, and we have people here that can't afford to have healthcare.
A lot of things.
It's possible, so we need.
So I I gotta question while we're talking about property, where do we stand?
Yeah.
On on the property.
Well, that was the property, I was thinking though, I think we left it under consideration, the last call made by we had. Should we finish, should we? That's, unless, because I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's that's more of a, this, if we need to revisit that, perhaps schedule another executive.
Well, and then, and then I was gonna say, remember. You could not take any formal act, so you have to do it in a regular council meeting.
It's actually commissioner's decision, right?
And that'll be.
It would be.
And that'll be something that gets revisited here soon, it's just, this has been.
Exactly.
You know, we're. Fifth meeting of the year, so it's in, it's in the queue for to be addressed.
But from a financial perspective, I mean, if that has, I mean, you know, that's our, that's our asset there, that building is our, the buildings are ours. You know, the stuff that's inside of it, and if we wanna expand it, I mean, we need to start thinking out of the box with that footprint, it doesn't really make sense to build another. Healthcare building somewhere else, if we're gonna hold it, we may as well keep it on our property, but we need space and there's some space there that could be available.
So we have any other ARPA specific comments?
Yeah.
To review?
Uh well, what I wanted to do, sorry, I wanted to uh go back to my coroner, um. Well, first of all. I'd like to consider them the thirty five thousand for the county fire departments for fire radio spending. Um or um or PPE from the lost revenue money. And I'll make that as a motion.
Can you repeat that motion?
Yeah, I'm I'm making a motion for sev- uh five thousand for each co- uh county township fire department. To be utilized towards radios. Um or PPE that was utilized during COVID.
And how many fire departments do we have in certain counties?
Seven, so it'll be thirty five thousand in total.
And you made the motion.
And I seconded, yes. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Uh the other thing that I wanted to.
They they have to do it too. For it's reformally.
There's a motion to the.
Oh, okay, I approve the motion for um just to just to use the funds up to thirty five thousand, five thousand per fire department. From our.
Well, I'll second that, all those in favor?
The other thing is, I just wanted to go back to the coroner's building, because we need that sooner than later, but we talked before about thirty three thousand for six. Additional spots to store bodies and get rid of the reefer trailer, maybe sell the reefer trailer. For whatever scrap or use or whatever to put towards that, so.
There wouldn't be six additional spaces, it would be four.
Well, there, it's, when we talked about si- the thirty three, it's on sale for thirty three from thirty five, it is actually a six person cooler. Oh, you're talking about getting rid of the two person?
Yeah, well, maybe you got other ways to think, that's the way I was thinking, I didn't know, you know.
Right, so yeah, a couple of us have talked about six, um so ultimately, you, I'm fine with whatever, four person cooler and actually just running into. As far as looking at quotes is like, they're like great deals and then they don't have, like I said, the hardware or equipment, especially. Um ultimately, no matter what we do, space is going to be a problem. Um ideally, I'll just give you my pipe dream real quick. I think that if we could build a second garage bay onto the north side of the building, we could house the coolers there. We could turn that into the storage, because if you haven't been in the building, you're welcome to come visit, we're, we're pretty crammed in. Um we could turn that into, you know, keep our autopsy kind of sweet area. And kind of fix that up for when we do have families that come in to make identifications. You know, coming and see their loved ones and stuff, but that would create the space for the coolers. And then just hand it, also, we have a leaky north wall, so maybe we can just fix that all by covering that up. I sent the, I sent the video, did I send it to you? I sent a video, it actually rains up like underneath the north wall. And it's snowing in the side of the garage door, so. I thought if we could just maybe like build a an addition onto, you know, even just like. Problems with that building the first year, so.
Need to make sure when we contract.
Yeah, yeah, the first year ruined um. The bathroom, I mean, it's not ruined, but the first year, the air conditioning units on top of the bathroom. And it wasn't drained properly, so when the air went on, it just drained through the bathroom ceiling. It's coming out the light fixtures, so um but but the north wall leaks, so ideally, what I would love. To just, we're we're double the caseload from where we were already, we've got twenty for the year. When we had that building built, it was about, we were averaging about forty cases, we're at eighty easy every year right now.
So does the thirty five thousand dollar number represent your pipe dream or just?
The thirty five thousand is, that's a cool, that's a six person cooler. I don't know anything.
I will, I mean, if we're talking that kinda improvement, I mean. Given all the other things that we're we're planning on. Uh distributing ARPA money to, that may be more of a thing we we.
Kim cap.
Exactly, yeah.
Can you see it too?
And that's, but but in the meantime, I think. As far as what we're going to do right now, today is that thirty five for her.
We change it.
Yeah, and we, I mean, if we, if we. We could possibly get rid of the two person. Yeah, absolutely, I mean, whatever is, whatever is.
Just so the commissioners don't have to come back to us then, let's make it fifty out of ARPA or.
Yeah.
Kim cap.
And she said seated too, right?
Yes. Or seated.
Are you making a motion on something or no?
I'm just saying, let's, let's, let's make the motion broader, so they don't have to come back to us.
I don't, well, when it comes to that, I think we need to be specific.
But we can't, but you might wanna make the motion in your next meeting to take the rest from whatever, but at least you don't have to ask us for fifty thousand.
Yeah, if you do your, or she still would have to bring.
Right, yeah. Okay, I'll I'll make that.
Speaking of the next meeting, we we had brought up the status of zip through mark, so I just wonder, are we gonna have a? Joint meeting on that, or when is that gonna be back on the commissioner's agenda, because that's kind of languishing and we are violating a lot.
Well, it'd be best the next, I mean, we can meet joint jointly.
Are you talking about it?
You said that we, we had the executive meeting, so now we can't really do anything further without a public meeting, right? I thought that's what I heard you say.
It's up to move forward with with a motion to direct.
So we'll um. Schedule a joint for our next mid month, for our mid April meeting.
Oh yeah, but there's nothing really stuck on it right now, there's no more discussion.
I need to make a motion that we would spend up to fifty thousand for the uh bringing the coroners, coolers up to.
Motion in a second and just discussion on that, that would be the fund of your choice that you have to ask us about, so.
Not for ARPA?
No, fund of their. Fund of their choice, that way there, you don't have to wait another month to hear from us.
And and in my opinion, to. Make that right and to make that proper, the corner is right, then there needs to be an additional bay added on. It wasn't built big enough. It might, I I I wanna take that back.
A motion in a second, all those in favor, aye? Is there any opposed?
Thank you.
Did uh, you mind if we just really quickly, like, did you have any updates or anything you wanted to go through from that, I just had a couple. Um, were there any board updates?
Well, skill, we were discussing um what we're gonna do with um. The adult learning versus uh. The uh high school. Uh contribution program. I think there's gonna be some upcoming things that we're gonna have to discuss and. Help funding a adult learning program might be something that we might wanna consider. Something that they would guarantee a couple of years service for work in the county, it's just, just thinking out loud, that's. That's where we're at there.
No, you know, I, to your point, I think a lot of the times we meet with these um. These entities that are concerned whether we have enough people to fill job positions if they were to put a new.
I think some of this stuff needs to be handled by the school.
Speaking of job positions, are we um. Satisfied with where where we're at for recruiting for the executive director?
That was my update. So um we we had a a meeting, the three of us, with the Economic Development Foundation. And we felt we should look outside the box, one of the things we recommended was possibly looking for a retired person that would be willing to work part time, like thirty hours a week. But they already have healthcare, so they don't need it um as an option, but expanding the search, and so. Uh Tom was here, Tom's been talking to some Vass Lake people, told me I was gonna try to make their next meeting, I screwed up the date for the first one, but. Um that was where we.
I try, I don't know where Janice ran off to, but I mean, that's, it's been two weeks. Right, well, I mean, from our last discussion and revision. We need to move forward on selecting candidate, because that's.
How many applications, I only know of.
That's a possibility, or the board, or the board carries it till a good candidate is found, I mean, you can't just settle either, I mean, and. I don't know that we have one.
Okay.
Is is all I'm saying, I don't, I don't know today, because I haven't seen the stack.
No, I've, I'm, I have not received anything from anyone since last.
Uh the other thing is, is that um, this isn't private or anything, and I just wanted to let you know that um Anderson Distillery is in Washington Township. So it's a little more near and dear to me, it's right down the road from the house that I grew up. Um I did write a letter from me. Because I wasn't speaking for the council or the commissioners, but just from me personally, that I thought it was a great idea and. I I thought it was a good thing for Stark County, if you wanna see a copy of that letter, I will furnish it, but it it didn't implicate the county in any way, but I just. Hopefully, you know, you, I I wanted to make sure everybody knows about that, commissioners have talked talked more in the planning commission with. When the. When he came to Army, I didn't know if he knew that he was going after uh the ready grant. He's he's raised. I think one point four billion of his own money already, so, you know, he's he's done a lot, so. I don't know if he's gonna reach out to any of you, but you know, I uh hopefully, if you're interested, you will express similar support, so. Um that's the last thing I had, I think um Don had mentioned there would be public input though in the end.
Let's figure out what we spent today on so on um.
Yeah, Rachel, Rachel will come compile that and give it to us.
We're we're over, actually. The other things will have to come um out of other budgets. Yeah, and the last ditch. Right, last ditch, right, that takes a super majority.
When will we, when will you see our first solar?
We will see about two months of solar revenue in twenty twenty five, and this is the one thing I did discuss, because we have talked before about. Being consistent on on the the other projects that have been being discussed in terms of the EDA. But if there's any faux pas that I'll take responsibility for was that payout. Every January, maybe that's problematic for both of us, just because it'd be nice to, you know, have the money, but it, the way it's written right now is that the money comes in January. And it sounds like from what both are saying, that it would be about two months worth of revenue.
Are they online now? No, is there anything, nothing, nothing yet?
Nothing connected yet, but they actually have done some testing and they've done some communication with the. Yeah, no, no power generation yet. Yeah, did you wanna go?
Joint meeting next month?
Ah, the joint meeting, uh here's. Is there any room for any compromise, maybe like towards the mid part of the day at all or something?
Or this this morning?
Afternoon next time, would you be willing to afternoon next time?
Yes, there's.
Wait, what's the joint meeting for?
A joint meeting again, so that way we can um.
Discuss ARPA? Or what are you discussing? Property.
We'll do it, uh an action item in our next meeting and then. I am amenable to or, or later.
We, we kinda made it, I, I just, and I know Justin say it's virtually okay, but I just wanna give Justin time, we, we agreed about this.
I wanna make it later than four, because he's gotta be in judgment.
That's.
And the employees like it too, because they don't have to stay.
Uh, so, does that mean that you're, you're not having a more meeting that day, it'll just be a joint?
Yeah, that afternoon.
Tax day.
Oh, joy. Well, it's, uh, does anyone else have any comments regarding anything we've discussed today?
I was wondering why you're, the previous salt building was built.
Uh, probably in about ninety-seven or eight.
No, yeah, it would have been ninety-nine.
And why isn't it last?
Construction, that way they can.
They, they build all salt domes like that. They're brilliant, weird.
The geodesic shape.
One of those good ideas at the time.
I'll ask, uh, my brother counsel to join me, I'm asking to adjourn.